Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hingham School Committee meeting of August 12th, 2019, our last meeting of the summer. First of order business is called to order. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If anyone else is in the attendance who intends to audio or video at the meeting, please let me know. All right, seeing none. We will move to item number two, which is to hear a budget update from our colleagues who are here tonight, Senator Patrick O'Connor and Representative Joan Moschino. Thank you both for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Come on up whenever you're ready.
Where do you want to go to present?
If you want to go to the podium there, that's perfect. Thank you again for being here.
Sure.
Can never get enough to, we can never get enough budget information.
Yeah, this is great. Here, let's do it that way. We can put the, yeah, that's perfect. I think. We just put together some slides that we thought would be helpful. I suppose we should have sent them. But it's nothing terribly creative, all pretty basic stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
But it just helps to follow along. So thank you so much for inviting us in. It's always a pleasure to be here. And it's our first opportunity to present and work with Dr. Austin. So we just wanted to say a special welcome from myself and Patrick. But looking forward to working with you and with the whole school committee. And I just, I didn't realize it until today, but boy, Carlos, you're outnumbered. You have a woman majority board. That's awesome.
We do.
Locked out, man.
We do have Dr. Ed, too. He's not here tonight, but yes, but definitely outnumbered.
I'm one.
I'm sure you'll shine among all these fabulous women. But we did, the budget process concluded in July, and the budget went to the governor, and he signed off on the budget for all of it without any vetoes on the budget line items, which was pretty exciting to have that collaborative working relationship with our governor. And so we just thought we'd put together just a brief presentation to sort of see where Hingham landed, and it's all good. Senator, do you want to?
Yeah, just to echo what Representative Moschino said, I thought that this budget was very good. The economy, in my opinion, is roaring in Massachusetts right now. We're going to close out fiscal year '19 with a sub-budget, a closeout sub in October. At that point in time, we'll have a good understanding of how much money we'll have as far as a surplus, but indications are it's going to be close to $1 billion from the previous fiscal year. And then it's the conversations that the legislature and the governor are going to have to have as far as what we want to do to invest that specific money. Obviously, a majority, I would say, would go into the rainy day fund, which is already at a record level as we have right now. The last time that it was at the level that it exceeded was in 2007. So obviously, we spent our reserves in '08, '09, '10, '11 into the recovery. But, you know, all indications are strong. The commitment to public education has never been stronger as far as the Commonwealth goes. Right now, not only into our local school districts, but into the, really, the first round of whatever it is that's going to come out for ed reform. We have invested this year significantly in those buckets that we're talking about, whether they be the English learner bucket, the economically disadvantaged, the health insurance bucket, and special education. All of those were funded as if there was something on a four- or five-year basis that we were going to move forward with. We'll get into that in a little bit, but just generally, a 2.7% increase in both the Chapter 70 and the unrestricted general governmental aid from the Commonwealth. And if you look at that over a five-year period of time, the Commonwealth has invested approximately 16.5%, all told in the five years, $1.09 million to the town of Hingham above where it was before. This goes to show the level of commitment that the state has, but it's also a very universal basic formula that the state's using, where it's essentially $30, this year, $30 per pupil increase. Our hope is that when ed reform continues to move forward, that that structure is adjusted as well, because I believe that some of the school districts are being short-changed by using that formula, and that when you consider health insurance costs, when you consider the additional cost of curriculum, when you consider post-employment benefits, all of the things that make up your budget, I think that that's woefully lacking as far as a baseline of how we should move forward. But for the time being, as we continue to address this issue, I think that we're doing as much as we possibly can. Both Representative Moschino and I advocated for $100 per child this year. That amendment was struck down in both the House and the Senate, but know that that's sort of a baseline. There's a large group of legislators predominantly from suburban communities who are advocating for an increase to that structure.
And just so you're aware, the fact that it was struck down this time really is nothing, to say nothing more than this is an ongoing dialogue between the House and the Senate around the ed reform, around the Foundation Formula Review. And I think it was really, the idea was that that is an important piece of policy, and it shouldn't be, we shouldn't short-change ourselves and act too quickly. It should be, you know, slow and steady and really making the kinds of investments we should. So the budget process went forward as its own thing, and the dialogue continues, actually rather productively, around the Chapter 70, the changes to the Foundation Formula. So we shouldn't take anything more from that than it's a current dialogue. So in fact, this budget, as the Senator was saying, really makes some important investments. And I do think they are, that we've been looking ahead towards the fact that we need to build in, you know, so we don't have structural deficits in our budget when we get to whatever changes we're going to make. And so you're starting to see a lot of money invested, as the Senator was saying. So it was $345 million into the special education circuit breaker, and that is anticipated to be funded at the full 100% of our state's 75% responsibility. So last, it wasn't last session, but I think it was the session before, a lot of the rates had changed, and we came up a little bit short, but then you saw us restore that over the various supplemental budgets. This time, they really looked at what the rates were and really looked to see what their anticipated expenses would be, and really are trying to target that full 100%. And if it's, if it's not quite there, it's, those are just estimates, but there's a true commitment on behalf of the House and the Senate through the budget process to support all of the wonderful work you do around special needs services for our children. There's $115 million for charter school reimbursements, less of an issue for Hingham, but still nice to see a bump in the reimbursements, in the way that they're giving the reimbursements in that first few years that we really take the hit on it. $1.5 million for civics education, which I'm personally very excited about, and we were both very supportive of the civics bill that came forward. And now this is, this is money for the schools to really start to do some of the work, the curriculum development. So that was really exciting to see. And we're super excited to see what it is you'll come up with and how it'll be addressed in the schools. $75.8 million for regional school transportation reimbursement, and then $24.2 million for Metco funding, which I know is something that's very near and dear to Hingham School Department's hearts. They have a new director at Metco. She's fabulous. They've really been trying to sort of take a step back from how they recruit children and how they place them in the schools. And you've, I'm sure you've seen some of the changes that they've been doing in terms of the application process, and I think it's all positive. And I think what they're doing is really sort of getting themselves, their feet back under them, taking stock of, you know, it's been 50 years, taking stock of, you know, where they head now. And it's really pretty exciting to see it. So I think there'll be an opportunity to grow that program, and, you know, obviously, that's a complicated thing for a school district to decide whether or not they can take more, but there may be opportunities for that in the future. So it's exciting to have the full funding for that.
And the next slide, just very briefly, goes into some of the sort of community earmarks, for lack of a better term, that we were able to secure in this year's budget. And what our focus has been on, working with organizations that are working really well down here for the South Shore in a variety of different categories. $30,000 to enhance municipal buildings, $13,000 for an organization based out of Waymouth that helps individual families that are experiencing incredible challenges in a variety of different needs. $10,000 for Joanna's Place, which specifically deals with families who have gone through tragedy based off of homicide. That is also a Waymouth-based organization, Simple Gesture, which helps those who are food insecure in the South Shore. Empower Her, which is an amazing organization, providing mentorship for individual young ladies who have lost their mother. And Magical Moon Farm, $25,000, which is an organization that helps children with cancer, sometimes, and too often unfortunately, terminal cancer, where they knight the child and put them in a sort of a fantasy world for a period of time to get them away from the situation that they're facing. So all these organizations really do amazing work for so many throughout the districts that we represent, and we wanted to show them that the state has the same level of commitment and the same level of appreciation by providing them some resources that, you know, they go out and have food raffles and, you know, really, it takes a lot for them to raise just a little. So for the state commitment to be in there, they've been able to do quite a bit.
And it's a nice example of how the state's, small investments by the state through the budget process can really unlock a lot of what's really wonderful about the public-private partnership opportunities in our district. So I think it's really an important piece that we do. We also wanted to highlight a few of the grants that recently you've gotten. The most recent one was the Safer School Grant Award, which was awarded just this past July 10th, and it was $56,980 for the electronic access logs, public announcements, and other safe upgrades. And it's the kinds of, you know, grant opportunity that the Senator and I are both really delighted to advocate for and to work with you on. So when you put in those grants, just a reminder to let us know, and that's not just for the school committee, but sort of municipal-wide, we were able to just advocate for, a big one for the dredge, for the harbor master as well. And those are examples of the kinds of things that we're happy to write letters, pick up the phone, and just to support the advocacy and the applications and the grant money that you do so well. So, you know, just, we want to say kudos and congratulations and highlight that as well.
Yeah, and to the administration, too, writing the grant. Third, there were only, so the medium-level school systems, which is just based off of school population, there are only 39 grants awarded of the $7.2 million to that, and the maximum grant of those 39 was $60,000. So you got 56. So you guys are right at the top, and obviously, that goes to a high level of professionalism in the grant application process, as well as the need and the desire for the state to partner with the town of Hingham, especially with some of the amazing things that you've done inside of your school systems.
And I would have to say that, on the whole, the town of Hingham's reputation really does precede you. It's well-known to a lot of the grant-making authority within the state, and so keep up the good work.
Yeah, just recently, we were talking about the STEM at elementary schools, and, you know, just that implementation of that, being the first in the state to do that, and to be able to see that and to, you know, go to that day, and, you know, it's really special. And we consider Hingham a marquee school system in the entire Commonwealth, and it's rightfully so.
Yep, and we're happy to tout you in all the work you do.
Thank you.
So education legislation, we just thought, a quick refresher. From last session, there were, obviously, I mentioned the civics bill that we passed that we're both very excited about. You know, I think, I think we all agree that the extent that we're engaging youth and young adults in civics is a net positive all across the board. And I am sure, I mean, given all of the youth engagement that we are happy to celebrate, I mean, we're recently at Girl Scouts, we're always at the Boy Scouts. I have no doubts, it'll be exciting to see all of the projects come forward around the civics. And then, of course, the English language learners, the LOOK bill was also passed into law in 2017. Probably less impactful here, but still an important, an important piece of legislation for educating all of our children, however we find them. So it's really, it's been exciting to be part of that.
Yeah, and serving as the ranking member on the Education Committee, I was able to serve on that conference committee to resolve the two differences. And one of the things that I think is going to be beneficial to a lot of Hingham students is going to be the seal of illiteracy, that they're able to get on their diplomas, but also especially dealing with, I'd say, more of the economically disadvantaged school districts that also have a large amount of English learners. Just to be able to have that flexibility inside that programming, I think, is going to be huge when it comes to setting their curriculum. And this upcoming school year, 1920, is going to be the first year that any of these, you know, sort of trial-run curriculums that these school districts are going to implement are going to be put in place. So it's going to be interesting to see the results, and a large amount of family and parental involvement in the coming up with the curriculum as well. So it's good.
Yeah, all exciting.
Thank you.
Oops. Okay, so legislation for this session is actually pretty exciting. There's really kind of three, well, actually, three big bills. You hear everyone refer to the Promise Act, which is really the Foundation Formula Review, recommendations, and the implementation. I have to say that, at least from the House side, I don't know how the Senate feels, but I feel like it's been a really great dialogue this time around. We came really close last session, or excuse, yes, last session, but the, you know, weren't able to quite resolve some of the differences. But this session, it feels like the dialogue and the focus really has been pretty impressive. There's also the Cherish Act, which is the higher ed, funding for higher education. And then we also have the addressing high-stakes testing mandatory recess, and then the classroom temperature study, which are two bills that the Senator and I filed that arose out of just, you know, educators in the district looking to make a difference and to be responsive to just different things that come up. So it's exciting to have great legislators that, and, excuse me, great educators that have a good relationship and rapport with us, and really reach out around different things, and we can work on and do research for and file legislation that's responsive. So that's been pretty exciting this session. But we can talk about them in much more detail, if you like.
And I think the difference between last session and this session, they changed chairs in the Senate of Education. It went from Senator Chang Diaz to Senator Jason Lewis. So I think that that's been a major change. But also, this time, the governor's budget had a buy-in. The governor's budget included legislation that was not adopted, but legislation and funding to basically implement an education reform that he thought was appropriate, that was based off of the '92, '93 model, that would implement it over a period of five years to full implementation, to fund all of those things that we talked about earlier. Economically disadvantaged would be the biggest expense. Healthcare, English learners, and special education. That was kind of put aside. We took the money. The money's been invested, as you saw, a record level of funding inside of public education this year. And so now it's a question of where do we move forward legislatively, and what's the timeline that all of this is going to be implemented? And then what do we do on the outliers, where, by outliers, I mean predominantly suburban school districts that stay out of the buckets that are included there? Where then do they fall if we're going to have $1 billion or $1.5 billion invested into public education? What sort of structure can we have to invest into those school districts as well? Obviously, we want to tackle the most challenging school districts and do as much as we possibly can for those economically disadvantaged who are not getting the education they deserve. But there's also that lingering question that's out there. In the meetings that I've had with Senator Lewis on the Senate side, I know that Representative Moschino's had it with Chair Peish on the House side, has been, you know, how do we make this whole for everybody, that even if it includes investing more money and not necessarily diverting money away, but just where do we go so we don't have to come back here? And it doesn't take us so long to get back here the next time, because, you know, having this take 25 years to get to ed reform in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts while kids are literally falling behind is unacceptable. So how do we get it right this time? And how do we get it right for a period of time that we know that there's at least either triggers in place, mandatory legislation, accounting, whatever it is, to make sure we're keeping up with the standard that we're setting here? Because you really only have one shot at redoing this. And I truly believe that everyone's at the table. I think that everyone's with the right mindset. It's coming up with a number and coming up with how long it's going to take for us to get to that number. And then I guess the third one would be, how do we, how do we get, how do we, how do we get that number out of our budget into education? And I think that that may include raising revenues. There's a millionaires tax proposal that could be on the ballot in the next, what is it, 2022?
2022.
2022. But a lot of people think that's too long to wait. So there's, there's a lot of lingering questions with this, but we are tackling it at a very aggressive basis, that I would expect to see something before the end of the year to move forward. And would love your, you know, your input once it's released, and we'll keep you informed once this product comes out. But I have a feeling that it's going to be sort of a combination of everything, because there's about three or four bills out there, all being pushed by, you know, certain interest groups. But I think it's going to be a combination of everything that fits the best for the needs of the Commonwealth.
And I don't know what your sense is, but in talking to Chairwoman Peish, I feel like we've gotten past individual bills and are really focused on what the core concepts are, which is always a good sign. That's always, when they're really meshing ideas and initiatives at that level, and really talking about, you know, if we fund it in this way, you know, where it is, because it's a complicated formula, right? So if we fund it in this way, or we add this money here, or we change it, you know, there's always winners and losers. And what I've heard is a commitment that there's no losers in this, in this concept. One of the things, I mean, what the really, the opportunity really is, is to get at some of the structural inequities in the Foundation Formula funding. And so, you know, the formula has kept, generally has kept pace across the board, but then what you see is that where school districts have more resources or more wealth, they're able to fund in excess of the minimum threshold, and then the communities that haven't been able to do that are funding at or a little above the thresholds. And so what this really has the opportunity to do is to be a transformative financial investment in, so school districts, not just where there are children living in poverty, but where there's school districts that there are huge concentrations of children living in poverty. So a lot of this money will go to the places you would expect, the gateway cities. And the hope is, is that it's a transformative amount of money to really bolster those education and then shrink what's been a very persistent achievement gap. So it's actually really super exciting to be happy, to be part of this conversation, part of this dialogue. I mean, I think we should be direct with you, though. You know, the kind of money we're talking about in the investments are, you know, Hingham, schools like Hingham, we'll see a little bit of the money, but you're already at the 17.5% reimbursed, you know, funding percentage. So you're already maxed out, which is why, when the Senator was referring to the per-pupil expenditure, the per-pupil number, jumping it from, say, the 30 to 50 or to 100, becomes a little bit more important for all of us. But, but all districts, I think there's like six, where however the funding works out, they wouldn't see any kind of an increase, but that's not bad out of 351 school districts. So it's really exciting to be part of this conversation, and I think the commitment is there to do it by the end of the year. So we'll see how it goes.
Great.
Anyway. And I think there's a, there's a slide in there that really runs through what the four core recommendations are. I mean, you guys can.
Yeah, that's the next slide, which we kind of.
We already sort of walked you through, but it's there if you want to read it and take a look at it.
Went over. And then one of the issues that we've been, I've been working on in particular, has been the school resource officers. I think that this program has been phenomenal in Hingham, in Waymouth, and all the communities that represent has one. In talking to some of my colleagues, some of them do not have them in their school districts, and I think that it's something that, as a Commonwealth, for the town of Hingham right now to be funding school resource officers inside of the school district, to be able to supplement some of that funding through the state, you know, revolving grant program, I'd love to get it kicked off through some of the surplus money, as long as the surplus would be, obviously, be earmarked for future years, because we don't want to create a structural deficit. But I think this is something that the state really should invest in, because long-term, during the criminal justice reform bill that we just did, we outlined specific regulations about who's to be appointed school resource officers. And if you were to go into a room of any one of the eight towns I represent and talk to people, the officers, you could pick out which one you thought would be the school resource officer. And that's basically what we put in Mass General Law, was that, you know, pick the person who best fits the qualities that can connect with those kids and be their, be their resource, be their bridge to the law enforcement of the community, to know that they can trust on them with issues such as substance abuse or suicide. The things are really important that we should be addressing. I think that school resource officers play a huge impact. And so with that, I have a legislation to create a grant program inside the Commonwealth for individuals, towns that have resource officers, to supplement that funding for towns who are looking for one, and especially for towns who have lost them over the years. Because unfortunately, this was one of the things, as we were fluctuating back and forth, the investment that we have right now in Waymouth, which is definitely the most economically challenging budget of the eight towns I represent, that was always on the chopping block, was, you know, the school resource officer position and bringing that individual back inside of the police department, rather than to be at the schools, because they were running through attrition and basically, you know, there were 10 police officer positions that were open. We were funding none of them at that point in time in '08, '09. And, you know, do we pull the guy from the school, the female officer from the school, and bring them back to the police department? So with that kind of in the back of my mind, and seeing how well this program's worked and connected, especially with the opioid epidemic and throughout the South Shore, I decided that it would be appropriate to file some sort of legislation, to get something on the books, to have the state play a role in making sure no resource officers are cut.
The last sentence of the description says the performance of an SRO is reviewed annually by the superintendent and the chief of police. So the evaluation of that person would be a joint evaluation? I think it's a good thing, but.
Relative to the performance in the, in the school itself. I don't, I don't think it's meant to suggest that, that the officer's larger performance as a patrolman would be subject to superintendent's scrutiny. It's really meant within the.
But it's, that person's personnel record would have comments from the superintendent included in their evaluation.
Yes.
Yeah, because before the law, a lot of schools were transitioning, you know, I still have the DARE program, but they lost a lot of DARE officers, and then they were really trying to transition to the school resource officers. But schools were using them very, very differently. And I think the law was really meant to reflect the fact that it's supposed to be an educational focus, and almost like a community pleasing. It's not meant to be a substitute for discipline or for the, for either the superintendent or for the principals. It's the principal who's in charge of his or her school. But, but there was this understanding that, that there was a good and robust use potential for, for the school resource officers. So what it requires is that you work that out ahead of time between the superintendent and the chief, to understand what they're doing and how they're coming in, and what academic or educational components that they're contributing to the larger school climate. And then one of the other problems has always been is that there's never really been any training, some formalized training. And so, and a lot of the SROs were going and getting their own training and paying for it on their own time, which was tremendous, but if you chose well, you got good training; if you didn't choose well, you didn't necessarily get. And it certainly wasn't functioning as a system, and you couldn't rely on it across. It was kind of interesting, it was very interesting. And then to have it included in the criminal justice reform was actually pretty amazing.
So this is passed?
So.
This is included and passed, or is this just proposed?
The, the language, as far as who to, the police department identify the best officer is passed, that's Mass General Law. The grant program is going through legislative process.
So this paragraph is part of the law?
Yep.
Yep.
So we'll check our MOU to see if that evaluation piece is included in what we have, since this is new to when we had done that MOU.
And kudos to you for doing an MOU. A lot of places didn't have that prior to it. So it was, it was a piece that was definitely missing in other school districts, so it's exciting.
We are very fortunate that both the middle and the high school, the middle school, our resource officers, they actually teach a class.
Yeah.
And we have one for the elementary schools that he rotates. Does he also teach a class? Not really, right? At the elementary?
He'll do elementary lessons?
Yes, yeah, which is a great thing.
Secondary.
Yeah, that's all good. So we're happy, oh, and we were, Miss, Representative Murphy was not able to be here tonight. He sends his regards to you and contributed to the presentation. I'm sorry, don't tell him. It's our secret. But, but he's also part of our team, working really hard to represent the town of Hingham and the school department. He sends his regards. But if you have any questions, we're happy to chat about any of this.
Thank you. I don't have any. I have a couple of questions. Can you talk about your bill about addressing high-stakes testing?
So that's not either of our bills.
Oh, or?
That puts a, puts a moratorium on high-stakes testing. There's a few of them out there as far as how long in particular, but this is just to basically take a timeout and reassess to figure out if high-stakes testing is the correct, or what specific high-stakes testing and how often we're doing it. That's basically the bill, is to take a timeout to reassess this, to get people at the table, and just talk about what we're doing right now as far as it comes to high-stakes testing. stakes testing.
There's been some interesting briefings, um, up at the State House through the Education Committee for the legislators, um, about different directions and, um, you know, European models and formats, and I, it's, it's not something I know a lot about, but, um, but it's been really fascinating, um, to really think about that accountability piece, um, and, and showing, you know, how students fare against, you know, similarly situated students across the Commonwealth, but, um, but also year-to-year. So, um, I think there's a shift, I wish I, I wish I, I should have looked at my notes again, but there's, there's a proper language about the way that they talk about the shift, like, from statistical to value-based, like, it, it's actually quite interesting, but not being an educator, it didn't sink quite in, um, yet, but, um, but there's, there's a lot of dialogue going on. So it's, it's been pretty interesting to see how it might, how it might evolve in a more positive way for educational component of students and, um, and, and teachers in the schools.
And when we talk to teachers and we talk to students in particular, this always comes up, um, just the, how often they have to be tested, how the teachers have to base their curriculum off of a test, and then the stresses that are involved with just, you know, everyday life as a high school student or middle school student, and then you add this on top of it, and a lot of people think that we might be, uh, losing our way a little bit as far as traditional public education goes, by being so test-centric. And so I think that this would give, give us an opportunity to breathe and just say, are we doing the right thing by our, by our, by our students?
I would agree. I, I see high school, especially in high school, toward the end of mid, like, eighth grade, they start realizing, oh my God, you got another test, and it's gonna count. And high school students have more pressure on them than any other time in their life. And the high-stakes testing, it, it is high stakes, 'cause they can't graduate if they don't pass it.
Right.
But on top of it, they have all these other exams, and to get into college, and now the pressure of, everybody should be going to college, and then, all right, do I have, have I scheduled the tests at the right time? Did I miss the date? There are so many deadlines, just on students, let alone on the teachers, of having to make sure they get all their curriculum in, and you have a weather delay or something, and it, I don't know. So, um, yeah, I would be, I welcome seeing how that goes. Um, the other thing, um, just to keep in mind for the suburbs, one thing on funding, just one little factor, is look at how many fund full-day kindergarten or not. And that's an area where the suburb, the suburbs, you know, we have these great, we even have a tuition-based full-day kindergarten. There are a lot of districts that are the suburban districts, that full-day kindergarten is not funded by the community, but those urban gateway districts, it is. Um, and so that could be a little niche of, well, give these suburbs the funds to fund full-day kindergarten. Um, and then on, on your comment about you have one shot to get this right, um, respectfully, um, I, I'm a little disappointed that the, the ninety-three Reform Act does say that the legislature should be reviewing the formula on a periodic basis, on a regular basis, and it's been, you know, it was twenty-five years that the review commission was established, it's dragging out more. Um, I encourage you to encourage your colleagues, that when this is done, that there's a commitment on a more regular basis to keep looking at the formula, because society changes, life changes. Who knows what we're gonna be even teaching in our schools in ten years, let alone what the economy's gonna be like, or what jobs are gonna be out there? And if that language is in the original legislation, and it's such a struggle now going through it, I really appreciate you making that commitment to, to not have this be one shot, that this has to be something we all do on a regular basis, as we pay attention to that public education in our Commonwealth. It's important to keep reviewing it, so.
Oh, I, I think your comments are incredibly well-taken, um, and it's certainly, you're not the only person that has had that, that has made that observation to us. Um, you know, quite frankly, um, I'm, I, I have actually great faith that, um, that we'll figure out the right balance of the formula itself. Um, what I'm more concerned about is the, the structural time, the time and the distance of how we build that into our budget, because I think the absolute worst thing we could possibly do is just say, okay, 'cause we could just say, yes, we're gonna do this, and we could dedicate it tomorrow, um, but, you know, one recession or us.
Oh, yeah.
And the economy, and the first thing that the governor, I, I don't mean to suggest that the governor would do this, but that the first thing the administration will typically do is nine-seat cuts. And so.
Yeah.
I think it's really important that we do get that in there right, and your, your comments are incredibly well-taken, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I support the Promise Act, which has the trigger in there for review. Um, I believe that that should be part of, uh, this entire thing. I was more speaking on, it's been twenty-five years, so if.
Yeah.
The, the, the way the legislature works, I mean, I.
Yeah.
The two of us can't control it all, uh, and so if, if this is gonna be one of those conversations that drags out another twenty-five years, now's the time that, as we put this in, this has to be, um, the update that, that fits for the, for the students of the Commonwealth.
Yeah. Oh, um, one other thing, the MSBA funding, when we met with the treasurer, she had talked about a bill about raising the.
Yes.
Funding limits for the MSBA?
Yes.
Is there any status?
I don't think that's been heard yet, um, or at least I have, I'm definitely co-sponsor on that.
I am too.
Did you see it?
Yeah.
But I don't think it's come up for hearing yet, has it? But what it would do, just for everyone else, um, right now, it's an annual bond of five-hundred million dollars for the MSBA program, um, for which you are an applicant, uh, for Foster. Uh, and this would expand it to, um, seven-hundred-and-fifty-million or some amount in between. Um, it's just a recognition of the fact that school buildings cost more, um, a lot of the projects that they're getting to now are big, like high schools, I mean, obviously Foster's not, but, um, and, you know, it was kind of, it was really crushing to get so close, and to just not make the financial, to have a worthy project, but just to, to get so close and not have, make that financial cutoff, and then, of course, to have to reapply again. So it was just a way of trying to, um, expand some of the funding and, and just make a few more projects available, um, but there's a lot of need, and so, so we'll see how that goes. But I, I don't recall that there's been a hearing, 'cause we usually go and testify together when things like that come up.
We can, uh, we can take a look and get, and provide an update.
It'd be a great way to use that.
Through email.
Billion-dollar surplus, take a chunk of that to give to the MSBA.
Yeah, yeah, would be nice.
Or even if they come up the place, the, um, when there are people on waitlist, if one, if the people who have been approved don't end up going and, and using the funds.
So there's a waitlist for the library bill program, but there's no waitlist for, um, for the school billing program?
Anything that we can do to make that happen?
Well, we tried. We had that conversation with the treasurer, but, I mean, she really did explain to us, um, the cycle that they have, and, um, so it, right now, at least for the foreseeable future, it really is around, um, it's just the, think about the timing of when you would learn, how you go to town meeting, how you, so, since it's an annual bond cap where the library is a five- or six-year bond, um, the, the MSBA is an individual year-to-year bond, so. It, that's part, that's really what it comes down to, is why they, why they can't do it that way, so. But, uh, it was actually Carlos, um, who initiated a conversation with the treasurer and brought most of you, uh, and it was, and I thought it was a, um, it was a great dialogue. I was able to pop in for a few minutes, uh, I know the Senator couldn't, but, um, but I thought it was a great dialogue, and, and it was a good meeting with her. And she, she definitely did comment to me afterwards, uh, that she heard what she, she, she took to heart everything that you had to say, and, um, she appreciated, and she really appreciated the dialogue, so, it was good.
Well, let me, um, just take advantage of the opportunity and thank you guys once again, as part of my duties as a liaison to your offices. Um, you know, I had to invite you to come here, and, uh, thank you so much for accepting. And I want to echo what you mentioned about Representative Jamie Murphy, uh, yeah, he did, uh, you know, regret that he couldn't be here, so, thank you. Um, I realized that you have one-point-five-million dollars for civics education. When this discussion started, one of the things I said is, because someone asked me about it, um, I, I said, I just hope the governor will put money, you know, in, in some of the items that he's introducing out there. Is that one-point-five-million dollars for Hingham, I'm on?
I wish, no.
And, and so how do we go about getting some of this money? Do we have to apply for, for the grant? Do you know?
Um, I haven't seen how they're gonna roll that out.
Yeah, I, I know that the money was allocated inside the budget, I'm guessing that they'll go to DESI, and DESI will create their funding formula, uh, but we want to provide every school district with, with funding. That was one of the things we heard from, from multiple school committees when we were out there and, uh, spoken on on the Senate and House floor, that we can't keep on, uh, putting good legislation forward that's well-intended, but with no funding behind it to allow, basically let it linger as an unfunded mandate inside of our school department's budget. So this money was the start. Um, this was the first step in allocating some money to our school districts, the implementation period obviously going, going forward, and then seeing how much it actually is costing the school districts, and then reassessing the amount of money we're gonna provide as a, as a funding mechanism.
All right, yeah, please keep eye on that, and let us know if we have to apply.
Well, and as a former city councillor and a former selectman, that's one that we're particularly attuned to. No unfunded mandates.
And we also wanna thank you, both, for issuing letters of, um, um, support, for, in order for us to get the, uh, safest school grant, what, so, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we'll be right there with you every step of the way, advocating whatever you choose to do with Foster, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, I just wanna echo what Liza was saying, she said it much more eloquently than what I was thinking, and I'm glad she said it, um, the way that she did. Um, thank you for all the efforts that you're doing, and I realize that you guys have come in at the late end of those twenty-five years. But twenty-five years, this is a very strong message, is pathetic, and I think the legislature needs to do something tomorrow, like you said, do it, just do it, for crying out loud! Come on!
Well, when you think about it, every, um, every year we delay is, uh, a new class enters, and a, and a class graduates.
Right.
Yeah, it's generational.
So I'm disappointed it didn't happen.
Yeah, no, and I, I was on the conference committee last time, uh, when we passed Foundation Budget Review Recommendation as written, uh, in the Senate, uh, and the House took a, a more, um, sort of, let's have DESI figure out the numbers approach, which I, which I completely respect as well. Um, but then going to the conference committee, I think that the biggest concerns in there were just what the number was going to be, is how we fund economically disadvantaged children. And that was the thing we just couldn't come up with. The, the Senate had it a hundred, we continued to move our way down. Uh, my Chief of Staff Greg's here, he can tell you, we went in Saturdays and Sundays, we were there for over sixty hours of negotiations to try and get that done, uh, and, you know, I thought we had the ball at the five-yard line, with some people on both sides, and the House and the Senate not gonna sign the, the jacket to agree to the bill, um, but unfortunately, it just didn't get done. And during that period of time, we also changed Senate presidents, and, I mean, the whole, the whole structure of the legislature was really.
In flux.
Very much in flux. And so we weren't able to get it done, and, you know, we basically said as the school year, as the legislative ye, year started, that this is the top priority. I'm disappointed we haven't gotten it done by now, I've expressed my disappointment, as has Representative Moschino, uh, that that hasn't taken place, but I was ready to sign last year at a, at an undisclosed number of percentages for economically disadvantaged children, which was still very good.
Yeah, I, I do, I took it as a good sign, though, that, um, and it wasn't just on education, it's on other pieces as well, that when we came back in, you know, having, having a Senate president settled, having the same speaker, um, they jumped to it very quickly. Um, as soon as the committees were organized, and we knew who the Senate chair was, they, they, they were scheduling the hearings, and the hearing came up really right at the beginning of session, which gives us a, a nice long lead time. So I, I actually personally took that as a great sign, that there's a commitment, um, you know, the subtle, subtle signature, subtle signs that they make, um, but the dialogue has been pretty, pretty much ongoing, so.
Yeah.
So we'll see what they have.
And, and the governors at the table this time, too.
Yeah.
Whereas the House and the Senate were last time, and the governor was still reviewing the legislation, kind of figuring out what the legislature was going to do, this, this time around, he presented his own plan. So now there's three plans kind of on the table, so that usually indicates that something's going to get done in the relatively near term.
Right, so, yeah, and both chairs are actively saying, no, no, it really will be this year, so, I, I don't think they would be saying that if they didn't mean it, so. Um, of course, you never know, but, uh, it's complicated stuff, I mean, the formula is, is what it is, it's very complex. And figuring out the numbers, um, of, of the, of, of, um, how many children there are in poverty, and, and the way they've been looking at it has been, um, they've assigned, uh, school districts to one of ten deciles, and so that what they're really looking for is that concentration of poverty, um, and getting the hands into the, the money into the hands of school districts that, that really can do the most with it. So it's exciting to see, so, it's important work, as you, as you pointed out, so.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we appreciate your efforts on it, really. Um, anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for what you do and for your time tonight. It's good to see you, thank you. All right, we're gonna keep moving. Um, item number three, minutes of the school, approval minutes of the school committee meeting of July twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, here in your package, do I have a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Second?
No, second.
All right, so thank you, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, minutes are approved. Great, um, questions and comments? Um, is anyone here tonight with comments or questions to make? No. All right, uh, moving on to item five, Superintendent's report.
Uh, I'll just briefly tell you that on the summer hiring update, we're, we're still chugging along. Um, we're close to, to getting things done, but then again, we're, we're within a couple of weeks of getting the teachers back full-time, so, uh, I think it's gonna be close, but, but I know that my calendar is pretty full with, uh, new teacher candidates that are coming to see me, so I'm, I'm enthusiastic that, and, and encouraged that we'll have those all filled by the time school starts, so, we're, we're making good progress. Uh, and the second thing, as I said, I would give you an update on enrollment, um, as of, um, when I spoke to you on the twenty-ninth of July, we had a difference of enrollment of forty-six new students. Um, at that time, there were a hundred and four new students enrolled, which means we've lost, you know, sixty-some-odd students. Um, and then, uh, as of today, we actually have fifty-one new students, um, with a hundred and twelve new students enrolled, uh, and obviously, we've had seventy leave us, um, or so. So, um, we're still on the positive, and if, right now, we're a fifty-one over where we were, uh, at the end of the year, uh, and, uh, we'll certainly know by the time that the September, um, school board meeting, uh, school committee meeting happens, then I'll be able to give you a better, uh, indication of, of who left and, and who came in. But we, we're pretty close to that right now, just fifty-one as of right now.
And still spread pretty evenly amongst?
Most of it's high school, to be honest with you, high school, um, the biggest numbers and, and, um, our expectations, we end of the year, uh, at, at high school, um, with, um, total number, let's see, oops, I forgot, I, I lost that for a minute. Anyway, I can just say that in the high school, we're looking at, um, thirty-one new seniors, eleven new juniors, and nineteen new sophomores. So obviously, that's the place where we've seen the greatest growth. Uh, and then, um, the elementary seems to be pretty evenly distributed.
Interesting. Any idea what that does to, um, sections, like I think about the, the elementary schools, there's different sections, and we get, we bump up to that, um, to that twenty-five number from an elementary's perspective, I don't know if we've gone over that, or?
We have, at this point, we have not gone over that, we're watching that very closely, um, we're paying attention to that, at this point, no. In fact, if you were to look at our numbers, overall, we're up by thirteen new students in, in kindergarten, and that's pretty well, um, distributed across, um, the, the district. Um, we're, we're minus five in first grade, so we're really not at that threshold yet, we're saying at twenty-five. Doesn't mean that we're not getting close to twenty-two, uh, in some places, but we're watching that, and then we'll have a much better idea, obviously, as school starts, of where that is, and I'll report that to you, uh, at the, our first school committee meeting in September.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, anything else? Um, any communications to?
Yeah, I'll, the one communication I would say, we did hear from the MSBA, uh, and they, regarding the, uh, Foster project, um, it's, and I'll ask for John to help from this, but, um, we do understand that there were sixty-one applicants, um, for this round, I think it was sixty-one, um, which they pared that down to thirty, what they call senior applicants?
Senior.
Senior? Uh, and we're one of those, uh, 30. Uh, and so they will be coming to visit us on September 10th, um, to Foster and, and John's coordinating that movement. You wanna say anything else about that?
No, not really, that's it. The, it'll be a two hour meeting on September 10th in Foster and it'll, it'll be a working session, so it won't be open to the public. Um, and they'll go over some of the highlights of the program and then they'll take another tour of Foster, um, similar to what they did a couple of years ago. So, um, you know, we'll be, uh, coordinating that meeting, providing the information that they need in advance of that meeting and, um, identifying the participants of the meeting.
Great, thank you. Great step, thank you.
That's it, that's all I have.
Yeah, that is very good news.
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you. Um, other communications? Ness, were you going to do?
Oh.
So Ness went to a, an, a mask event, right, was?
Mask event, yes.
Yes, and I asked her to update us on it.
Something that they provide to school committee members. Um, it was, the title of it was Equity: Understanding the Dynamic of Power, Privilege, and Prejudice. Um, I thought it was fantastic. Um, it talks about the impact of any marginalized group, so it's not necessarily just race. It could be, um, disabilities, women, um, you know, anybody that would be a dis, um, marginalized group. And they broke us out into different sections and it was, it was pretty eye opening. So I thought it was great. Um, the presenters, there was one presenter, Manuel Fernandez. He is a principal of Cambridge Public Schools. The other one was Des Floyd. Um, he's a diversity and equity consultant. I thought they were fantastic. Um, Manuel, he, he was talking about different things that they do in their district. Um, he was saying that they do weekly seminars to, to discuss race and culture. They have staff trainings, um, regularly. There's seminars for students. And he opened it up for six months. He said that we could go visit his school if we were intrigued, um, which I really would like to go do that. Um, so if anybody would like to join me, I can set that up. I wanted to just provide that and, and just basically start the conversation that, um, maybe we think about an equity and inclusion specialist. I know that we're, we're predominantly white here, but I think it will benefit our kids when they leave here and go out into the working world because they will have all kinds of issues that they're gonna see and I think we can educate them here.
Ness, did you say that workshop was run, run once a week?
Uh, he does seminars once a week, just kinda like sitting down with the staff, uh, faculty, talking about different, um, race and, um, culture issues.
And that's great. Um, you know, there's an outcry right now on social media, as a matter of fact, within the last week, uh, for our administrator, our administrators, school committee to pay more attention to race and culture. Um, so I have mentioned to individuals that reached out to me directly, that would bring up to the body that, you know, this is perhaps is the moment for us to start addressing more race and culture in our schools. Um, according to some, there is a lot of issues at the middle school and some of the kids in the middle school are actually bringing that to the high school. So, let's keep our ears and eyes open to that.
Yeah, I've even seen it at the elementary school level, um, some issues there.
Thank you, thank you for that.
That sounds fantastic and this is, I agree, this is a good opportunity to look at these things. I'd love to go, if you wanna go to Cambridge, so.
Maybe that's something we can, um, talk about at the planning meeting in September. Like how we can work on that as a committee.
And we could update you on the work that's ongoing to address those issues.
Because I was gonna say, Jamie and his team have been doing some great work on, on diversity and inclusion as well. And I think with our inclusion facilitators, granted they're on the special ed side, but you know, that's, there's some great work already starting and, um, and continuing to go. And I know there's been some, some of the, um, leaders at the high school have done some work amongst themselves, um, you know, book club type things where they talk about race and issues related and how they can work with students to be more inclusive. So I think there's some good work that's already started and we can certainly build on that at the, talk how we can do that at the planning meeting. All right, great, thanks for going to that and thank you for updating us on that. Um, all right, moving on to 7.1, to review the proposed revision of Hingham Public School Policy 1.3.2, that would revise the date of the superintendent's annual evaluation and to act as appropriate. So this is in your packets. Um, Carrie, do you want to speak to it again? I know we did last time, but Ness wasn't here. So we did a first read at the last meeting, so tonight we could vote if people are in agreement.
Yep, so it's pretty simple. It just changes, um, the previous or our current policy. It says that we have to evaluate the superintendent by October 15th of each year. Um, and what we wanna do is change it, it makes a little more sense, just for time, to work with the timing of the school year. And then also Dr. Austin's contract says that we should evaluate it by the, um, by June 30th. Um, so this would just change that date. Um, and it would, it also ta, it takes the date out of it actually. And so, um, just says that we are gonna evaluate the superintendent annually and the school committee and the superintendent will agree on when that is.
Simple, all right. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the policy change?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed revision of Hingham Public School Policy 1.3.2 that would revise the date of the superintendent's annual evaluation to be done annually with no specific date as presented.
Carlos, thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, done, thank you, Carrie and Policy Committee. All right, fun thing, 7.2, to review the proposed school committee meeting dates for 2019 and 2020 and act as appropriate. All right, so there is a, it's always so daunting to say now and what. There is a proposed calendar of meetings in your packets. I think this represents the second and fourth Monday?
It actually rotates, it depends on the month.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not necessarily the second and fourth all the time. It rotates depending on, because we have some months with either holidays or vacations.
Yes, true.
And so I tried to, took work around those.
It's basically two a month. Last year, we had only scheduled one meeting in December. Um, but this year, I think we're going to, just because we don't, like, we might have the MSBA issue, so I think we'll keep two on the calendar and we can always, if we find there's a period of time where we don't need to meet, we could certainly, um, take it off the calendar.
Yeah, what I liked that, what we did last year is that we took, we actually chose the first and the third week.
Yes.
By doing that, we sort of like, sometimes we went two weeks without the meeting.
Yes.
And it was great because it gave the secretary more time to get her notes together.
But the good news is, we're hiring somebody this year to help you with the minutes. So, yes, that was good, it did work out. I think there's a potential that that does work out here too, because some of the Monday holidays. But, um, and we are, we'll stick with the seven o'clock start time. Although I will make a proposal on something. But are, what do folks think of this calendar as proposed for the regular, the regular meeting calendar?
Works for me.
Yeah, all right.
I'm good, on, October 7th, I might be late, so just that you get a quorum.
Okay.
But that I have a conflict in town hall that night. Um, so I'll probably, unless you keep it brief and?
And there it is. So whatever, to not. That'll be our, our thing. All right, um, one thing though, I did wanna chat to people about, we, we'd had the committee planning meeting. We put a tentative date of Saturday, September 21st, but that date is not fabulous for several people on the committee. So, she, and Jamie, you, you and, sorry, you and Paul could both make the 21st, but the 28th was not.
Can't.
You cannot for the 28th. Was the 21st good for you, Jamie, or was that, I feel like you?
I feel like, yes, it was.
It was good?
Yes.
Okay. So, but the 21st is not, but was the 28th okay?
No.
Okay, that was it, okay. So 21st was not a great date.
Was it ideally one for the 21st?
No. Carrie also had a conflict and I could make it happen, but a little bit tough. So, one, two thoughts. One was, and I'm so sorry because I hate to postpone on a Sunday. But would the Sunday work better or the first Saturday in October? We're just pushing it out a little bit, but? Which Sunday? It's the first Saturday in October, sorry, I don't.
Maybe the Thursday.
Sunday's the 22nd.
The 22nd, okay.
22nd of?
The October 5th would be better for me.
It's really bad for me.
Oh.
I'm gonna have a wedding that day.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I won't even be in town.
Okay, so that does not work for you and we need you there.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Pretty clear.
I am open to doing it on Sunday if you want.
I'm open to any Sunday and September.
All right, are Sundays?
It's can't just Saturday.
I hate Sundays, but, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, so Sunday, and you were okay with?
I'll be okay with Sunday.
All right, Sunday the 22nd? All right, awesome. And we'll stick with eight to 11? Is that okay with folks? Sorry, and we, this time, Jamie, we will get out of here at 11 o'clock. Promise is promise, this time it's going to happen. All right, all right, terrific, all right, so we will do that. So, um, we'll ask Pam to make that change to the calendar for the 22nd.
And then also, I think down in the notes section?
Yeah.
Should that say, under five, should that say 2019 or should that say 2020?
Good call.
2019 budget meeting dates.
That should be 2020, yeah. Hindsight.
Um, okay, so, um, if this, do we want to vote this calendar in as, with those adjustments? Sure, you ready? All right, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the 19, during the 19, 20, 20 calendar, um, as proposed.
Second, uh, sorry, with the two changes?
The two changes.
All right, so this planning meeting on the 22nd and then change item five to 2020 budget meeting dates.
There you go.
And thank you, Libby, sorry, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right, gotta count.
So bad.
Yes, I know, all right. Um, new business, item 8.1, here a food services update. Thank you for your patience, Kim.
I'm good, sick and sad. So, my?
The, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Can we, um, grab her?
Well, now you're really asking me to do some stuff.
Or I could, or I could plug in and give her this PC if you?
Where in the packet is it? I got.
It's here.
It's on the drive.
Should be in the drive.
On my drive.
Shared with me.
Shared with me? Or it's not in the, uh, did Catherine put it in the drive?
You do what you need to do. Right here, shared with me?
Yep.
Thank you. There you go, all right, and you want, um, it'd be, which one is this?
We might have to download it. It's in, it's uploaded in Google, but it's a PowerPoint. So it won't be able to, it's not in Google.
So, are we just going through this way or you wanna just?
You might be able to just to present.
Sorry folks, still new to my system.
Windows people, I don't know.
We're gonna have to add this to Jamie's job description.
I downloaded. I downloaded it to my desktop.
Let's try this. Let's just do this.
Go to view.
I'll take a tour later. Just move it along.
Should be under, should be under slide, is it?
View.
Under view?
Present probably. Or under view? The present was at the top.
Oh, sure it was. How many doctors did it take?
So, who's gonna move over my slides? Do we have a clicker?
We got it.
I have it in my bag.
Do you want a clicker or you want her to click? We can, we can move the PC over there for the time being.
Want to reach?
Yeah, here you go. Probably won't be able to take that.
I think you're okay, I should be.
Is that power? Well, if not, you'll be, you know, on your own.
It's right here. I'll get a battery. That's right, that's right.
Should have practiced it ahead of time.
Hi, everybody, it's been a long time since I've actually presented to you guys. So, um, I was really like, like, really, has it been that long? No, it hasn't, really? Um, so, this is Annabelle, Annabelle Ho. She is the Assistant Food Service Director. Um, and she came on board with us, um, mid-September of this school year. I'm thankful to have her. So, um, she and I did this together, I kinda, I didn't outline, I have to tell you, I didn't outline what we were gonna talk about and I handed it off to her and said, you know, can you throw some pictures together? And I came back and I was like, this is amazing! So she did a, um, she really put this all together. Um, I helped a little. So, um, operational review, I decided that it was, um, important for us to kinda look back to where we were so we could appreciate where we are. Um, and back in 2013, I have kinda put on here, um, the percentage is the participation particip, um, percentage. Uh, for those of you who do not know, participation are the amount of students who are participating in school lunch versus enrollment. So back in 2013, in the district, we were at 28%. Now we're at 37.47! So, I mean, almost a 10% increase, um, in that time. And then I have, you know, um, put on here, you know, the high school, the middle school and the elementary, we track the different levels. Um, at the elementary is, it's just, uh, it's just blowing my mind that it is still increasing. Um, I, you know, had gone to, um, an educational session with some of my staff, a couple of my managers, and she had asked me, I'd only been here for like a year or two, and she says, ideally, Kim, where would you like, you know, where do you? I said, if we could hit, if the elementary schools could hit that 40% mark, I said, we would be golden. And, I mean, we're, we started back in 2013 at 34.64 and now they're at 48.26%. I mean, to the point where, you know, John and I talked about, you know, contracts and, you know, we wanna, we want incentive, because they're unions, we want incentive. We want them to, you know, we wanna be able to reward them for doing a good job and not just because you've been here a year, let's give you a raise. Um, so, you know, that's, it's worked out well and, and they, um, I, I have to tell you, you know, my team, they're like, well, we don't really do it for the, for the money. I'm like, yeah, but you know, it's the recognition and I'm sure you appreciate it when you get that check. Um, so, uh, and then we move over, we'll talk about cash flow. I don't wanna dismiss the work that's going on at the high school, the middle school, but you can see as the kids are growing up with, with me and as I've been the food service director, it's really kinda starting to drive that, um, participation up as well as we've had management train, uh, changes and, you know, the new school at the middle school really gave us a good shot in the arm. You can see, we went, you know, we dropped from 17.86. We then, you know, we managed to get it up to 20.25 and then we jumped to 25% that one year. Um, I think when I shut down the snack room at the middle school, they revolted. But then we get to cash flow. Um, and, you know, in 2013, we were losing money. 2014, I was like, I just need to make a dollar, I just wanna make a dollar! So we, we pretty much got there, 495. Um, you know, and you can see, it's pretty much been steady. Um, you know, John and I spend a lot of time talking about how are we gonna spend money? What are the right ways? And we've been very cautious, 'cause it's, you know, I, I, I was like, I don't want the floor to fall out from underneath us and then end up, you know, falling backwards. I wanna, you know, we wanna keep the momentum and build that momentum and keep it going up. Um, so, you know, we have done, you know, we have done some reinvestments, but as you can see, we didn't really start reinvesting into our program, um, until 2016 and very cautiously. and very cautiously. And then in two thousand seventeen, we did a nice little reno over at the high school, and we kinda changed the flow, we've, um, been able to purchase more equipment, and really, um, take care of, you know, this, last year, we went up for renegotiating for, um, salaries, and we, we got a nice bump up for, um, you know, the food service workers and the managers, um, and really made us a competitive employer. Uh, and I have to tell you, I, I can't tell you how many times I walked into a school when they got the word, the official word, from the union rep, and I, they were, thank you so much. 'Cause I, I, there were some that were on the verge where they were gonna have to leave, 'cause they just couldn't financially afford it, but they loved their job, and didn't wanna go, so, yay, I'm glad we got there. So, your, our cash flow is the sales revenue plus student liability minus expenses. So, the student liability, um, is the amount of money that's kind of sitting in students' accounts, it's not my money, it's their money, um, and if they were to call on us and ask for their money back, we give them their money back. So, you know, we do, um, account that for a liability, and we are also, um, regulated that, um, to have three months' worth of expenses, and it, it, it's about four hundred thousand dollars that we need to have in reserve, um, that is required by, um, regulations. I did a nice little, little bar graph, um, and I only, you know, for space-wise, so the first column is the district, the next column is the high school, the middle school, and then, um, the elementaries. So, you can see that the elementaries in, which is the last column, really has that steady rise, um, and then the district, along with that, uh, is really kinda starting to push us. And where we've had the growth in the middle school and the elementary, that's really helped to drive our participation up for the overall district, 'cause there's more kids in that school, so. So, we are now a self-sustaining program, which we're supposed to be. So, we've been able to replace, maintain, and upgrade all of our own equipment. So, this, just for example, this last year, um, we replaced all the POS terminals, 'cause it was that time, it was six or seven years ago that we had replaced it, and talking to Joe Andrews, he's like, yeah, you should update, and so we were able to do that, right out of food services. Um, we have ongoing professional development, um, thankful for Annabelle, she's helping to really map that and plan that out, um, you know, and it's, it's important, 'cause, you know, we wanna keep our team really, um, buying into our program, and giving them the tools to make it happen. Able, we're able to support the pay raises that reflect the minimum wage growth, and add positions to support the foundation. You know, that was always a concern, can we afford to have another, you know, three-hour person, it's nice to have that. Um, we, and with that, we've been able to increase and speed up service by increasing the number of cashiers and adding additional POS, POS stations. All of you who have kids, one of the biggest complaints is, there's just not enough time for me to get through the line, so we're constantly focused on that, to do, um, what we can as far as to speed up that line and get those kids through. We've done some investments, we had our high school renovation with the deli bar, and we added the salad bar, which has been a huge hit, uh, you know, the kids love it, they can get the salad bar with any meal, it doesn't matter, um, it would be counted as part of their vegetable, or they could just get a salad, so they could go to the deli and get their sandwich, and then slide over to the salad bar, make themselves salad, and it would be the same price, there's no extra charge for that. Um, and by moving the deli bar into its own little section, we've been able to really try to increase that flow, and make sure the kids can get through the line, um, as quickly as possible. Uh, and then we increased the cashiers at the middle school, so we bought new POS tables, we have registers on each end, so now, instead of having two cashiers, we have four. Okay? Middle school is crazy. It is busy.
The line.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for the clarification.
In case someone's just listening and not watching. The line.
The line, the line, especially on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with ice cream at the beginning of the year, the end of the year. They line up, they're ready for that ice cream. Um, so, investments in food service, we've had the, you know, the addition of the Assistant Food Service Director, which has really given, um, me the support in order to continue and, and stay on the operations part of it, but also be able to kinda push us into other, other investments. So, um, you know, social media, being able to increase our social media presence, um, by, you know, helping to build relationships within the school community, really, um, working on the grow towers, which we're gonna talk about shortly. Um, you know, she's really helped with being able to get, you know, grant applications, helping with taste tests, I mean, these are all things that I was just like, I, I, I'm like, there's just not enough of me to go around right now. Um, and it's a, a way for us to better serve and take care of our kids. Um, and we're gonna, we're shooting for breakfast at the high school this year, so, uh, and we have better operational coverage, you know, one of my big concerns was, I'm like, what if something happens to me? Not that I would ever wish that, but if something was to happen and take me out of the picture, who's gonna write the menus? Who's gonna file for reimbursements? Who's gonna make sure that, you know, the orders get put in correctly? Who, you know, who else can do that? Um, and, you know, we need to have that, we've worked way too hard to get us to this point that we, I, I don't want to lose it, you know, I need my Edelman. He's my favorite, just so you know. So, and we're working on serving more local and/or self-produced produce. So, I'm gonna let Annabelle take over, 'cause she's really worked on, um, a couple of these products, and then you get a chance to hear from her. That's Christian, he's, um, uh, part of the special ed program, and, um, works in the kitchen, and he was like, all excited about having his picture on social media.
Uh, so this past year, we've really been working a lot with the grow towers, um, so, uh, you can see it pictured on the right, they're, um, kind of like a vertical grow rack, they can have indoors that have lights of that, um, so that you can grow things indoors. And right now, we have three grow racks in the kitchen, uh, one in Nicole Pianta's classroom, and she works with the special education students, and we also have one in one of the science classrooms. So, it's been a really great experience to be able to work with the students, um, we start from planting the lettuce seeds, um, and the students help to maintain, maintain the plants by watering them, and then, three to four weeks later, uh, the lettuce is ready for the first harvest, and the students help with that, too. And it's really nice for them to, to see the whole cycle, because after they harvest it, then we bring that lettuce down to the salad bar, and they can even get it as part of their lunch if they want. And out of, uh, the grow tower, usually we'll get around three harvests after we, uh, do our first planting, and then after that, we put all of the soil and any parts of the lettuce that's left behind into a compost bin, we mix it, you know, once or a couple times a week, and after forty-five days or so, the soil is ready to use again, um, and we can use that soil to start planting again, so it's really nice to see the, the whole cycle, uh, come together. And over the past school year, we've really grown a lot of lettuce, we have served about a third of our lettuce from the high school salad bar, just from the grow towers that we have, and that's about a hundred twenty-five pounds or more of lettuce over the school year, and it's all organically grown. So, it's really nice to be able to provide that to the students, and to also have the students be engaged in that, and learn how food grows. And so, along with that, we were lucky to get accepted into the Mass Farm to School Institute, so this is a year-long professional development opportunity with the Mass Farm to School Program. And we start with the kickoff retreat in October, uh, where us and about six or so other school districts, um, will be at the retreat center in, um, Pittsfield, and will come up with an action plan that we want to try to carry out for the school year. And with this program, we're paired up with a Mass Farm to School coach, who will check in with us throughout the year, make sure that we're making the progress that we need to, and just, uh, to have it check in. And our Mass Farm to School team includes a variety, a variety of members from the community, we have some Hangon residents, uh, Hangon teachers, school council members, and also two educators from Holly Hill Farms, so it will be really nice to be able to collaborate with, uh, a diverse team, uh, and to work with them to try to increase our utilization of any of the growing spaces, like the greenhouse and the raised beds that we have at the high school, uh, to try to work on, again, increasing more of the self-produced produce, and potentially even, um, bringing in some more local, locally sourced food into our program, and also to increase building our relationships with the communities and the students in the classrooms. Uh, so we're really looking forward to that, and after successful completion of the program, we'll also be eligible to apply to some grants for the following school year and future school years. So, it's a really good opportunity for us to increase some of our farm-to-school activities. So, as Kim mentioned, another investment that we'd like to bring into the department is breakfast, so we do have lunch at all, at all of our schools, but we don't have breakfast. Um, and so we do want to, uh, kind of have a pilot breakfast program at the high school to see how that would go. We did talk to Rick Swanson, and he's completely on board with it, um, and happy to have that program start at the high school. We did talk about having a seven fifteen to seven forty-five, um, breakfast time, so that way, students can get breakfast in the morning, and it won't interfere with any of their classes, because they start class at eight. And there are a lot of benefits to having a breakfast program at the school, so one is to reduce food insecurity, so if there are any students who have trouble accessing or, um, uh, trouble accessing food at home, to be able to get breakfast at school is a great option, and, um, whether a student or family is food insecure or not, even if a student just, you know, wakes up late, or they just don't take time to make breakfast in the morning, to be able to have that available to all the students, um, is a really, really nice thing to have. Uh, another thing is improved, uh, improved academic performance, so sometimes a student might not be paying attention in class that much, if they're just, you know, if they're hungry, they miss breakfast, so, uh, that can help with their academics, uh, improve students' health, uh, decrease visits to the nurse, again, if, you know, a student might have missed breakfast, they might not feel that well, it might feel like they need to go to the nurse's office. It helps to save families' time in the morning, so they don't have to prep any food, and, um, also can help to decrease tardiness, because, as I mentioned, to have a breakfast before the school starts, so if a student wants to come to school to have breakfast, they should also be on time for class, because the breakfast time will end before class So, this is our proposed two-week cycle menu, so I did go out to, uh, the high school cafeteria on, on one of the days, and talked to some of the students, and asked like, oh, like, if we had a breakfast program, is that something that you'd be interested in? And a lot of students actually were interested in it, and, um, I asked them for some ideas for things that they wanted to see, so we did try to incorporate some of the things that they, uh, talked about into our menu, so including things like having, uh, breakfast sandwiches, uh, granola bars, smoothies, things that they can grab easily and take with them. Uh, so with the two-week cycle menu, we would basically have this menu repeat every two weeks, and on the right is, um, some daily offerings, items that we would offer every day. And depending on the feedback that we get, uh, from the students, we may tweak the menu, but this is what we're initially thinking about starting out with. Uh, so this is a, a visual of some of the items that we're planning to have with breakfast, all breakfasts will be offered with, uh, fruit, veggies, and milk, uh, and, again, here are some of the items, they can see, so like fruit, cereal, smoothies, yogurt, granola bars, muffins, um, basically, we're just trying to provide a variety so that, um, most students can find something that they like. And then here are basically some, uh, sample breakfasts, or what a reimbursable breakfast might look like, so a bagel with cream cheese, yogurt, fruit, and milk, or French toast sticks with tater tots, fruit and milk. So, for our breakfast price, we're proposing two fifty, it is slightly higher than some, uh, other districts, um, but on the right, we did break down some of the food costs of the breakfast, and we think that the two fifty is in line with the breakfast cost, so you can see at the bottom, the total food cost, just from, some of these sample breakfast range from one eighteen to one dollar and sixty-two cents, but that doesn't include costs of things like paper, which is, you know, like the tray that they might take their breakfast on, or any forks or straws that they might use, and the labor cost, and also something that we just wanted to keep in mind, in mind when coming up with the breakfast price, um, is that we wanna try to minimize any breakfast price increases, so just to try to have a breakfast price that will be steady for a while, that can accommodate any increasing, you know, food, paper, and labor costs that tend to increase every year. So, to serve breakfast, uh, we wanted to have a breakfast cart, we did work with one of the marketing classes this past spring at the high school, and the students actually came up with the idea of the breakfast cart themselves. Um, we asked them to come up if they, to see if they had any ideas to help to increase or incentivize students to, um, come to our, to our lunch, and they said that having breakfast could help to encourage more students to try lunch if they liked the breakfast, and they really liked the idea of a breakfast cart, too, it kind of helps to give them a feeling like of independence, um, like if you're walking to work and stopping by a food cart on the way to work, and we were planning to have this out in the cafeteria so that it's really visible, so, um, even if a student might not know that we have a breakfast program, if they just walk into the cafeteria, it's just out in the open, where they can see it very visibly. And we would, um, have, like, a cashier that would help to, you know, ring in any students who are getting any breakfast or à la carte items. So, some ideas that we had to promote our breakfast program would be to hand out vouchers as students come in to have breakfast on us, just so they can try it for the first time. Another idea is to have a frequent breakfast card, so, um, for example, if they got five breakfasts, or maybe ten breakfasts, they'd get a free breakfast on us. Kim and I definitely plan to be there a lot, uh, especially at the beginning, to talk to the students and see what they like and what they don't like, and also just to make sure that the program is working well operationally. And we also plan to have some polls on Instagram and Facebook, to see what students like and what they don't like, and to incentivize them to participate, we would have, uh, a winner selected at random who could win a free breakfast, and this was actually, um, an idea to have the polls, uh, that was another idea that some of the students came up with in the marketing class. We were also able to get a hot chocolate milk grant, so this was a grant from the New England Dairy Council to help promote dairy consumption, and so unfortunately, we can't serve any caffeine in our, uh, lunch or breakfast program, so having hot chocolate, um, kind of a, a nice thing that we can provide, and it'll be especially nice in the wintertime. So, this grant, uh, provides funding for a hot chocolate milk dispenser, and also promotional materials, and some funding to do a kickoff event. So, at our kickoff event, um, we'll have free samples, we'll promote the kickoff event with announcements, signs, and also posts on social media, so, to help promote the hot chocolate milk, but also to promote our breakfast program.
Well, we also, I'm gonna bring in herbal tea. Sure, we're also gonna bring in some herbal tea. 'Cause I'm like, ah, 'cause I can't tell you how many times the kids in the marketing is, can we get coffee? Can you bring in Atlantic Bagel? Like, I don't think Atlantic Bagel can handle the capacity that we need and, and make it the way we need it.
This is amazing, I'm, I'm chuckling to myself as being, when my kids were at the high school, being that mom who I would drop them off, and then I would get the text, could you run to Atlantic Bagel and pick up six bagels for me and my friends, 'cause we're at a Stuco meeting, and I'd be like, sure. So, I would be, I would've loved this with my kids. Nope, here's two fifty, you can just go buy your own.
There you go.
It's cheaper than the bagel.
Put it on their account.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, again, coming back to supplying our own produce, uh, we've done a lot of work with the grow towers and hope to continue that. I'm meeting with Katie Roberts from the Science Department in a couple of weeks, and we're gonna talk more about what they're growing in the greenhouse, so that we can better incorporate that food into the cafeteria. Uh, this is still in the early stages, but with the Mass Farm to School Institute, where we'll be able to collaborate with other members of the Hangon community, and, um, even just to bounce ideas off of some of the other districts that are participating in the institute, and to see what they're doing, we're really hoping to increase what we're doing, um, related to farm-to-school.
So, um... So, you know, lunch participation continues to go up. We still have plenty of opportunities to middle school and high school to continue to increase that participation. And we've certainly been able to make a self-sustaining department finally and not be reliant on operational funds in order to keep a school lunch program going here. And then, you know, by providing breakfast as an option at the high school, you know, this is, bottom line is, is we're always trying to figure out ways to better take care of our kids. How can we figure out a better way to provide them with something that they want and that will also benefit them health-wise? And we talk about the balance. You know, I try to, when we write menus, you know, it's, I try to kind of put, if I was at home making lunch for my kid, I would, you know, yeah, I would probably give him the cheeseburger, or I'm going to give him the grilled chicken sandwich, but I'm going to give him a few fries because I need him to come to the table. Right? So, you know, it's about that balance. And, you know, I can't say enough how much having Annabelle on board has really helped to push these other projects along. Operationally, it's, you know, you're talking about a million dollars in revenues that you're trying to, you know, manage, and it's a big job, and I can't do it alone. And I can't say enough about having Annabelle here. As you see, you know, the work that she's done is just amazing, and I'm so excited to bring our program up. John had asked me when I interviewed if I would be, sorry, I love my job, if I would be happy with being one of the best schools in Massachusetts for a school lunch program. And I told him, no, I want to be the best in the country. So maybe that's what got me the job. But I just feel like we're well on our way to really having an amazing program and really, you know, I'm just going to ride that wave. Any questions?
You've done, you and your team have done an amazing job. You really have. The success rate, the engagement, the bringing the kids in from the marketing, I mean, you're just bringing all assets, all aspects into it. It's not just serving kids lunch, putting it on a tray and serving it to them. I mean, you really have done a phenomenal job.
Yeah, food is not just what we, you know, we eat to take care of ourselves. Food is a lot of things. It's social, it's science, it can be cultural. You know, you started talking about that, and I was like, oh, I want to do a cultural food class. I'm like, how fun would that be? You know, because, you know, growing up, it was meat and potatoes. That's what I grew up with. You know, it wasn't until I got older, I shouldn't say that, because my mom would try to make me eat artichokes. But, you know, it's just, it's just, food is so much more. And it's, you know, I really wanted to build that, that bridge, that we weren't just a place to go have lunch. We weren't just a place to get that, you know, bouncy hot dog, okay? We were, you know, we were serving really great food. And, you know, my, my team is amazing. They really engage with the students, and they are really there for the students. They are amazing. Thank you.
Your passion and joy definitely shine through. So we appreciate all you're doing, and you as well, Annabelle, really, and everyone on the team. Anybody have any questions? I think we had a couple. Sorry. Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes.
No, I just wanted to congratulate you. Great job. And I love the way you and your staff are educating, too. You're not just feeding them. I think that's, that's amazing. And I also wanted to say I'm a big fan of HPS Foodie. I don't know which one of you runs it, but it's great. I just, I wanted to, so you probably, I'm sure you know, we've been talking about reducing the use of single-use plastics. And we talked about this at the Policy Subcommittee. Could you talk a little bit about what you're doing with straws?
So we have, paper straws are on our bid, and we will bring in, replace the plastic straws with paper straws as the inventory runs out.
That's fantastic. Thanks.
So, yeah, that will happen. I don't really have anything more to say other than that.
Who can't use a paper, would the plastic still be available, only just from like, anybody who's disabled who might choke on the paper? That would only be my only concern with paper.
I, you know, I don't, I don't really have any thought on that. They, folks came to me, they wanted to change the paper, and I was like, okay, we'll go change the paper. And then, yeah.
Yeah, I know the kids presented, it was just brought to my attention after that, that people who have a disability might asphyxiate on if the paper gets too clumped up and...
I don't see any reason why we couldn't keep a box of straws in every school if that was the case. There's...
Right. To have them on request, the plastic if necessary.
Yeah. You know, I mean, if somebody needs it, they need it.
Yeah, it's a pretty low incidence, too.
Yeah. I mean, in all honesty, I mean, we don't really, our straw usage is not that much comparatively, you know, for how many meals we sell, how many cartons of milk we sell. It's not, it's not a significant amount. I mean, we only, I think, 12 cases of milk straws for the entire year last year. So, and two cases of regular straws because we use them for the smoothies.
Well, just, you know, as you mentioned, you know, we also appreciate the fact that you guys, you know, recognized, you know, that we wanted to revise the contract. You have a great advocate on John, you know, he brought your attention, and we want to make sure that we're fair. So...
And I will say, it's, it's very, you know, very much a collaborative effort between all of us. You know, I mean, it's, we get feedback. John's great. I tell him and I'll, I will tell you, Paul, I'm never leaving Hingham. I got it good here, and I know because I hear from my other, you know, my colleagues. And it's just, it is, I can tell you, like, it's just nice that if I'm struggling with something, I have no issues with walking into, well, any of these people sitting here and say, I have a problem, I'm not sure how to address it. I tend to, you know what I'm, I'm feeling and saying just by looking at me. Because that's, I just, there's no filter, it just doesn't happen. So, you know, John's, I know well enough, I'm like, I need to bounce this off somebody. But Jamie's been there for us, too. And I can't say enough about, you know, and I'm sure Paul, Paul's already, you know, been in my office more than once. And it's summertime, I'm not here every day. So, anything else? Yes, I'm sorry.
I love the grow towers with the lettuce. That is so cool. And 125 pounds of lettuce. There's a lot of lettuce.
It is really something to see, you know. Yeah, it's, it's great.
So I was, as a sub, I was lucky enough to work in the greenhouse sometimes and in the gardens in that area. And at home, I just dug up about 20 pounds of potatoes from a, I think it's like a 24-square-foot plot. So it's little, and I got 20 pounds of potatoes doing nothing other than sticking them in the ground a couple of months ago, and they came up. So I would recommend potatoes. And then supposedly, if I had had the forethought, I would have been able to do it again. Like, you can get two crops in a year.
Well, Annabelle and I were talking earlier, you know, it would be great if we could get to that point, I dream big, that we really provide a majority of our produce for the high school, self-produced, right there. Because we do get money for the DOD Fresh Program, which is fresh produce, that we can use entitlement dollars to spend. And now I'll be able to take more of that money and spread it out more amongst the other five schools because if they already have what they need, I don't need to buy them any more produce. I can then spend that money on them. And it just would benefit the whole district overall, you know. I said, I said at one point, I'm like, how many of you have canned fruit in your pantries?
So one last question. When do you are looking to implement the breakfast at the high school?
This year. Yeah, we want to start it this year. We, you know, we did, Annabelle and I, more Annabelle, spent a lot of time researching. We went to a couple of different schools in the area that were similar to, you know, the Hingham community to kind of see what they were doing and how they were doing it. We did get to visit Paula over in Cohasset.
Oh, right, yeah.
And, you know, see what they were doing and how they were doing it. And, you know, it's interesting. It's, it's going to be new to us. We're going to put our best foot forward. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure we'll fall down, but that's how we learn. We'll get back up and do it again.
Yeah, it's going to be a success.
Just real quick, on the breakfast, if anyone, if any student is eligible for free reduced lunch, would they also get a free and reduced breakfast?
It's automatic. It is automatic. Yep.
So I think it's a great idea. I know my daughter will either go for a club meeting so she could grab something, or she just wants to go to the cafeteria and meet up with her friends before school so now they can eat breakfast. I had breakfast served when I was in high school, and one of the things that my high school, we had a little bit more of an open campus than Hingham High School, but one of the things that might, maybe you could start massaging the rules there a little bit. I had a free period, I remember, like second or third period, and I would go down to the cafeteria and I could get a juice or a bagel if I hadn't eaten breakfast. And I sat in the cafeteria and it was quiet, and that was my free period. So that might be, I don't know, if we can ever get there in Hingham High School, allowing the kids to, you know, even if they had a study, that they could sit in the cafeteria and then they'd have something to nudge.
I mean...
But, you know, then the people were preparing the meal, and you just went in whenever they were preparing the meal, and they stopped to ring it up. So I think breakfast is going to go over great. You might want to promote it the day that they have pictures and are selling agenda items because they're all going to be in the cafeteria before school starts and freshman orientation. I have your little card out. That might be a good marketing tool. And parents will be stopping in.
Well, they've already contacted me to buy the food, so now I know when it is.
Yeah. I completely support your initiative.
And just to piggyback off what Libby was saying, I was just trying to quickly look your Mass Farm to School initiative. There's somebody, somebody had sent me something that was something called Green City Growers. So it's the same kind of idea, growing their lettuce, but they do it in small spaces. And I was just looking quickly, I know the Beverly Public Schools does it, and the Park School does it. I don't know if there's any kind of partnership with Mast, the Mass Farm to School, but something that you might want to look into as well.
We're lucky enough, Aggie is a part of our buying collaborative, the agricultural school. And she has reached out. So, you know, I, we are definitely going to be utilizing them. So, thank you so much, really.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? So is $2.50 seem okay with you folks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the full meal.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, so far, I mean, our hope is that we're not going to raise it for years or anything. I mean, that it's going to be successful. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Yeah, thank you.
I'll give a follow-up.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Annabelle. Very good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
Enjoy the next, the rest of the summer. All right, moving on to 8.2, to receive the proposed superintendent goals for 2019, 2020. So Paul sent us his proposed goals. And just so everyone knows, the executive board met with Paul to go over them briefly last week. And so we'll go over them as a committee today to see if these are the goals that people want to adopt. And then we just went to, I had sent everyone the very recently updated model for educator evaluations and the rubric for superintendents and district administrators. So we'll need to decide what indicators we want to use to apply to Paul's goals. Yes?
I have a question about that.
Yep.
Because I looked at the indicators, and then I looked at the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report that we fill out. And there are not indicators on the professional practice goals or on the, on the performance goals. There are indicators for the standards. But the goals, we just, we just comment off of what's here. So I was a little confused as to what you were asking us to do because I thought the indicators, you rated on all of the indicators for his performance of standards. Because they're checked, they're bulleted in the evaluation form.
All right. I don't have the evaluation form up here.
So I was confused as to what you were asking us to do.
So I thought that, well, when we had met with Paul to go over them, there was, I thought that that was part of the, when you were talking to the superintendents.
Right. That's what that is. Right.
Right.
So participation in that becomes a professional practice goal, which is one of, which is my first. Right.
So, and sorry, and perhaps I misunderstood, but, or maybe we all did. Because, so I thought that one of the things that they told you is that we should, you would present the goals, and then we would pick, choose the indicators we wanted to use to use as the benchmark. But Liza is saying, and I don't have the evaluation form on me, I mean, in here, because it's not in here. Does the evalu, so what's the date of the, is that evaluation, has the evaluation form been updated to reflect this new July 2019 rubric?
I don't think so.
Because that might be a disconnect.
No, because the, the rubric is consistent with assessing the performance on the standards. But I, I think the indicators are the benchmark evidence. Is that what we're to be determining?
No, you're looking at my goals. That's very different than the, she's looking at my goals specifically, and I'm looking at the benchmarks within the evaluation rubric, which is, I'm writing up a report on this, but then you also have these. So they're two different things. That's, Jamie, you know, evaluations better than I do.
I'm trying to understand better. So the, so I can talk about when we evaluate our educators, right? Because it's the same model for everybody.
Yeah.
So when our educators are evaluated, they do a self-assessment of their own professional practice, and that generally produces the professional practice goal, which is connected, right, to some point to their self-reflection of the elements and the indicators in the rubric. But not, and then added that, too, the student growth goal, right, would also come. But they don't necessarily take that goal and map it to an indicator or an element. It's just the goal.
Right.
When you get into the assessment of performance, then any of the elements, the 40-plus, are all up for sort of grabs, right? And so generally speaking, when we, as administrators, identify an area that might need, require growth, right, we might talk to that person about developing a goal around that particular area of the rubric. But we don't generally have them map the indicators and elements to their, to their goals.
Okay. Yep, which makes sense. All right. So, all right, so then for now, let's just work on the proposed superintendent goals. And then we'll just, I'll just make a note to follow up when, to see if the evaluation model gets updated to reflect these new updated indicators.
And I apologize. You know, this is very new to me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So... So where I found this, where I just went, I just Googled MAEDU or DSE Superintendent Evaluation Forms.
Yep.
And the list of forms came up, and I did End-of-Cycle Summit of Evaluation Report Superintendent, that PDF.
Yep.
And that, that's where I got that. I can send you the link, but...
No, that's okay. I do have it at home. I just don't have it. I didn't have it up. All right, so everyone has a copy of the goals in the, in their packet. So thoughts just about the goals for folks? So we do have to adopt these for, for Dr. Austin. So I guess just thoughts that people might... So I guess just thoughts that people might have and, if there's suggestions, changes. Go ahead, Liza.
So on the first goal.
So let's take them in order. So we'll do.
The professional practice goal.
Yeah.
So it says here to engage the school community in providing challenging and comprehensive educational programs in a safe and supportive environment, enabling all students to develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success as local and global citizens. So then I read the key actions and it's the first year of the superintendent induction program, which I get that. So I, um, I'm having a challenge with connecting the two. And I'm wondering why the professional practice goal is not specific to fulfilling the first year of the new superintendent induction program elements. And then the second key action would also be of fulfillment of the entry plan.
Mm-hmm.
As a, because the, the goal is very broad and you could have so many things in, you know, encompassing that. And then the, the other goals are more specific to more, you know, specific, more targeted goals. So, um, that was kind of my, my biggest question of, the goal is so broad. And then I'd also like to see one of your actions being the fulfillment of that entry plan, because that's a big thing that we're talking about.
Right. So, so part of the, it's okay if I respond. So, so part of fulfillment of the, um, of the induction program is to do the, is the, the entry plan itself. And so I didn't list that in there, but that's absolutely the, 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 the process. The goal itself, to engage the school community, that comes right off the, that's your number one goal in your strat, uh, in strategic plan. Um, and so that's the goal of the, the district, is to make sure that accomplishes, that we accomplish that. And so the entry plan is about gathering data on where are we at in that number one goal that we have. So, so I, I can certainly rewrite that if you'd like, but, um, but that's the process of using the entry plan and, and certainly that's part of the induction, the new superintendent induction program.
Okay.
It feels like what Liza's saying is just that the, as it's written, the professional practice, number one, could be an overarching thing and that number one should really be a little bit more specific.
Yeah.
As a goal to the first year of listening, data gathering and strategizing.
So you could add what you just proposed, just suggested, right? If you, if you add the, that, uh, which is addressing the inter, uh, the inter plan there.
Yeah, I, I, I would like it to be more specific.
Yeah.
Um, I understand that that's, that is the strategic plan and the goal is to engage the school community. But of, uh, for me, I'd like to tighten it up for this first year, because I think, I mean, you can list all kinds of things that you should be doing under that goal that then you're not doing. And so, um. So the thing is, I think the, the key actions are sort of the benchmarks, the specific thing that we're gonna be. Right, no, I understand that. Doing it. So I, I don't know, but what we're shooting for is the, the overarching and the broader goal.
Right, that's why I was looking at that, the, the goal at the top is the overarching goal, and then these are the things Paul's going to do to meet that goal.
This year.
This year, yeah.
But the, but the professional, these goals are, when I look at the evaluation report and what we're supposed to be evaluating on, these are specific targeted goals as opposed to the overall performance of the superintendent. And so these goals are supposed to be specific.
Smart. So if I could just jump in, I think part of it, by looking at the, the, the form, because I, the, the educator evaluation model, right?
Yeah.
Requires, and I think this might be what you're talking about, a, a goal that's smart.
Yes, yeah.
So specific, measurable, something timely, don't judge me.
Yeah.
Joan, don't tell on me. Specific, measurable, something, something and timely.
Yeah.
So when we train our educators, we generally say, um, you know, I will establish, I will establish X in order to accomplish Y as measured by this, um, within a particular timeframe. So I think what, with, by looking at the form, that's where it says the goals must be SMART.
Yep.
And S M A R T. So I think that might be, um, what you're trying to communicate.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Because then in one of the standards is family and community engagement, which would be this engaged school community in providing challenging and comprehensive educational, I mean, that's like the broad, the skills of a superintendent.
Achievable.
Achievable. Yeah, achievable.
I'm looking it up. It's bothering me.
Yeah.
And line, time bound.
Specific, measurable, achievable, um, relevant and time bound. Thank you.
Right.
So one of the things I might suggest then, um, and in fact, we just had our, our meeting today in Marlboro, um, and I asked that question because now that I have the new SMART goals and I did talk to my coach and she felt mine were very appropriate. Given what your feedback is, my, she is actually coming within the next couple of weeks, I will sit down again with her.
Okay.
And to look at those and try to address some of those. So, and I think if, if you have other specific areas, it sounds like you're okay with, or at least partially okay with the rest of that documented, it's that first one. If there's anything else on there, to let me know what that is and, and then I'll address that with, with her when she comes on the twenty seventh, I think.
Right.
Uh, and address that and then bring that back to the September, um, school committee meeting.
Okay, I mean, that is fine with me.
The breast, the rest of the broad goals, I was fine with.
Okay.
I just found the first one was too broad.
Too broad at the top.
Um, and a couple of other, other little tiny suggestions, but I'll just send them to Paul.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything overarching?
I just had one on bowl two, the student learning bowl.
Yep.
I, I love the toolbox, um, and to continue the implementation of that. Is there anything that's gonna happen for the secondary level?
I had the same thing.
For social, emotional?
Yeah, wow.
And if so, should that be in there too?
Yeah, I had elementary to secondary transition as something that I wanted to see. Or even, I was thinking along the same lines of.
Because the toolbox is great and it's, it's.
Right, and then those fifth graders we know are going into sixth grade and I know that has been talked about. Um, and then are we even contemplating anything for the high school? But, I was the same.
I, I mean, it may be worth mentioning, um, sort of the, the, the model that we're using, the social, emotional, the multi-tiered access and insured tier one, so, so as not to name a program. So that's fair. I mean, I can certainly offer some feedback there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Anything else generally?
I'll just bring those back the next.
Okay. Great, all right. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, so, um, eight point three is to receive the draft of superintendent's entry and data questions for NSIP interviews with stakeholders. So that is the next, um, item eight point three in your packets. Did you want to do any intro to them or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say the, um, the entry plan I've actually, it is still in draft form. It's, it's for your review. I had updated it really into, to, to much more, I think, what we will be doing and what I will be doing out through the year and, and tried to add that. And, and so that was really just for your, um, for, you know, to, to review that and, and provide any feedback that you have and, and certainly do at any time. And the, the questions that I have with the data entry plan questions, those are the questions that I'm asking people as I meet with them, um, throughout the, the next several months. And, and so I wanna make sure that you, you're aware of those and you actually approve those and that, you know, those are the questions I'm going to ask and that, um, you know that that's what I'll report on when it comes time to make that report.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
I had one.
Questions or comments on it?
Just FYI comment, your phase four report of findings, January first to February twenty eighth, directly overlaps the budget development process. And so I found that very timely, but also you, then you may wanna think about reporting those findings to us as we're going through the budget, to the advisory committee, to the Board of Selectmen, to the various community groups who we will be meeting with anyway during that time period.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, um, that was something I noted that I thought it was good the way that happened.
Yeah.
But you should have the heads up that.
Okay.
Because people ask probably, anyway. And it could inform the budget discussions as well.
Right, and that's the intent, obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just had one thing on the stakeholders. I don't know if you're thinking of them as in one of these buckets that are on here, but, um, groups like, um, Hingham Education Foundation and Hingham Sports Partnership and SNAP and, um, some of the community groups that support schools but are not part of the school district, it might be good to add to that list.
Right. Yeah, and I actually was very much so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm thinking of, of those multiple types of groups, whether it's boosters or H E F, any of those are all in that same bucket, yeah.
Anything else? Nope? Okay, great. Thank you. All right.
Want to vote on those questions? You, you wanna accept those?
Um, yeah, are people, people are good with the questions that Paul used to, as he reaches out to all these stakeholders? Yeah?
I'll make a motion to accept the entry plan interview questions proposed by the superintendent. Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, all right.
Thank you.
Item eight point four, uh, to, sorry, eight point four is to receive an update on the hiring process for legal counsel. Liza, do you wanna give an update on that as the salary negotiation chair? Or no? I mean, I think it was just that we're gonna have the interviews.
Yeah, we've, um, as, after further evaluation, um, we have decided to adjust the schedule of how we evaluate the law firms. So we've narrowed down, a screening committee narrowed down the firms to three firms. Thursday, this Thursday, we will be interviewing them. Um, there'll be a salary negotiations subcommittee meeting with full school committee participation and administration will join us as well, um, so that we can meet the three firms and have some initial discussions with them. And then, um, we'll do some, then after that, we can follow up with them on reference checking and further questions. And then also after that meeting, we'll determine the next steps of, while we come back with a recommendation and discussion at further meetings.
All right, great.
But we have a quorum for, maybe Thursday.
Yes, so we're ten thirty here on Thursday?
No, we're nine thirty.
Nine thirty, sorry.
So we can be organized and then the first.
And then the interview start at ten thirty.
The first one is at ten.
Oh, ten, okay, sorry. All right, so nine thirty, all right. And are we in here?
Yeah.
All right, um, eight point five, to hear an update from Long Range Planning Subcommittee regarding the purchase of a solar powered school board for the varsity softball field at Hingham High School and to act as appropriate. Carlos?
So, um, Ed Trey couldn't be here with us today, otherwise he would help us, um, you know, shine some more light into this subject. You all may remember that back in, um, in the spring, Ray Estes brought to our attention the scoreboard. The Long Range Planning Subcommittee met on June fourth, uh, with Mas participating for the first time as a new member of the subcommittee. And, um, Ed introduced to us the, um, proposal that was presented, uh, in two thousand fifteen. We left Ed with, do some homework, contact the same firm, firm, and ask them for an update, which they, you know, he was able to get a new update. In the meantime, John also did some homework and spoke with Tom, uh, folks. And essentially, um, we, uh, before you today, uh, with the, uh, some documents and I will ask John to walk us through the process, John, and where we are, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to. So the, um, the, the scoreboard is, as Calo said, you know, previously was brought the attention of the committee to, um, uh, place a scoreboard at the girls' soft, girls' varsity softball field, which is really on the opposite side of Union Street from where the field is. When we did the field project, we did have a scoreboard at the, um, at the, at the school side, you know, at the, at the field right adjacent to the parking lot. Um, and it was our thought then that that would be the varsity softball field, but the one across from Union Street is in much better condition and over the years, that has actually been the preferred varsity, um, field. So with a request to place a scoreboard over there, uh, several years back, there was sort of a request to place one that would be solar operated. Um, and as Calo said, Ed did get an update of the solar operated scoreboard, um, you know, at a cost of about seventeen thousand dollars or so. With, with that, um, scoreboard, because of the placement, I reached out to Mike Clancy at the town and I said, Mike, you know, what would be involved, you know, could we just place it there? And, you know, Mike, Mike took a look at it and the price is seventeen thousand. He thought it would still be over twenty by the time installation and all the extras had been associated, had been incorporated into the, um, into the project. However, he, so he suggested that what it may need is a site plan review, so that I should start with Mary Savage Dunham, which I did, I called Mary. And, um, so Mary explained to me that there's, um, it, it would need a site plan review, however, you know, so she provided the application and she said, well, you'd wanna request in that as sort of a waiver from site plan review. Be based on the pla, on the, um, the thought that it's a scoreboard, you, you're, you're placing it in a, in a field, it's not gonna make noise, there shouldn't be a lot of disturbances. And that we would previously go to the neighbors, neighbor that's adjacent to it and make sure that it wasn't gonna be impacting them or, you know, if they were sort of okay with it. So, um, so, so that's the, the next step in this process. If we were going forward with this scoreboard. And, and the cost isn't really an issue. We had, um, back when we did the field project, there was the high school field, um, Hingham High School Field Projects Fund that was established. And, and that fund today has ample money to provide, to, to support this. There's a hundred, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in that fund right now. Okay, so, um, and, and the price of this scoreboard that we're talking about is, um, I believe it was sixteen, and, and keeping Mike's thought and, and plan, so the price of the scoreboard is sixteen, seven, eighty. And, you know, that's supposed to be all in, but, you know, when you, when you do something like this, it's gonna, oh, we, this wasn't incorporated, oh, we didn't expect this soil or something. So there probably will be, you know, a, a small amount of money, not, not a huge amount of money, but a small amount of money in addition to that sixteen, um, seven, eighty. So, you know, twenty thousand is probably not an unrealistic, unrealistic view. So the, what we're looking for today is, you know, the committee's opinion, do we wanna take this to the planning for the site plan review? You know, if, if the plan, if, if the committee says yes, let's go forward, let's put this solar scoreboard, um, in the field so the varsity softball team can in fact have a scoreboard, which, you know, makes a lot of sense. The, the field, um, high school field projects account, the, that was established for enhancements to the field. So. So basically, as we were raising funds for the overall project, any incremental funds, not incremental funds, but any funds that weren't expended during that project that were donated would go into that account. And the intention of that was, you know, future school committees would have the ability to use that account to provide any type of enhancements to the field that the committee so felt fit, felt fit, okay? So in my view, it's, the project seems to make sense. It certainly would enhance, I think it's a good thing to have the softball, varsity softball team have a scoreboard. This would be solar operated, it doesn't make a lot of noise. It would be, you have a picture in the package and what I did was I just created that little box there, so if you're familiar with the, where the field is, that, the box that you see now is really running parallel to Union Street, okay? So the, and that's the third base side, so if you're standing at home plate and you look to the left, you'd see the scoreboard. So that, that box, I'm not an artist, so that box isn't a scoreboard, it's going to be a scoreboard up there, so that's what you'd see. So it's actually going to be perpendicular to the neighbor and parallel to Union Street, okay?
John, would it be at that height or would it be elevated?
Oh, no, 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 it's going to be elevated. That's, this was just me trying to show you the area where it is, Liza. Like you said, I'm not an artist, so a scoreboard, you got a picture, the dimensions of the scoreboard might be, you know, probably 10, 15 feet up, okay, you know?
Like the ones that are on the?
Yeah, like the one that's on, at the, the baseball field or the, or the current softball field. I just put that box there, so I showed you the approximate location where the legs would come up and the scoreboard would be up above. I'm not good at that at all, I could not draw a scoreboard.
I recommend when you show this to the neighbor, that you have someone do it more realistic.
Right. I, I think that the, I think the important thing would be with the neighbor is to, you know, have somebody go there to address, you know, see if they have any concerns about it. I don't think, I don't think they'd see a visual, it's just be a scoreboard, I think they sort of know what it is, but.
We can talk later about the name.
Right.
John, could you say the name of the account this would be coming out of?
It's called the Field Project. I have it written down, Carrie, so.
Project Field Review.
The Hingham High School Field Projects Account. Hingham High School Field Projects Account.
And that, oh, sorry, and that is, those are funds that were left over from the original Fields fundraising that was done?
Exactly, yeah, they were donating, you know, we, we did the fundraising, but there were donations that came in, you know, after the, not after the fact, during the project that after the budget had already been set.
Okay.
People continued to donate. And we, we set up that account so that we could deposit those funds so that they could be used for enhancements.
Okay, and that, that was the school committee, given to the school committee to have the authority to expend those funds?
School committee discretion, yep.
Okay.
I feel like this is the perfect project for that fund and I'm all for it and let's go it, let's do it, I don't need to hear anymore.
I have a few more questions.
So we would have to go through, you know, site plan review, so, and that could happen potentially on September 9th. So, you know, as a result of tonight, if you were to take action and say, yes, let's do the site plan review, we would fill out that paperwork and we would request a waiver of site plan review because there's not going to be a lot of disturbances, it's not going to make noise, it's, it's, it's a small project, it goes along with the field. And that we've checked with the neighbor and there's no, seems, there does not seem to be any, to let them know, we're going to have a meeting here on September 9th and sort of to address any, any of their concerns, okay? You know, and if the neighbor didn't have concerns and the waiver probably would happen, so we wouldn't have to go through and complete blown-up site plan review.
So John, let me ask you, so we are meeting on the 9th, September 9th here, and the planning board meets on the same night, I believe. Do we have to be there?
Um, yes, so we'd have to have representative there, sure.
So if we have a school committee meeting, it's going to be a little difficult for us to be there, right?
The, the, it depends, you know, we, we've had conflicts with meetings before and just the representatives have gone down to, you know, deal with the application and hear what the entire planning board, you know, said about it to see if they would grant it and to sort of explain it. I don't know that, depending on, you know, we would know, if we want to go forward in this, we'd probably know if there's going to be some contention or if it's going to be any issue, okay? Or whether it's going to be, you know, maybe a 15 minutes to a half an hour where somebody could jump out for a little while to do it. Other than that, we could, you know, wait till we could find out what the schedule for the next planning board meeting would be as well, you know, that didn't conflict with a, a school committee meeting.
Hi, is there a question?
I was just thinking, could, would it be possible to table this as far as we're concerned right now and go talk to the neighbor and just say this is what we're thinking and kind of get a feel for how receptive it would be?
We actually thought about that, Carrie, but what we did, we didn't want to talk to the neighbor until after we talked to the school committee to see if you wanted to go forward with us talking to the neighbor.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that's, that's really where we're at right now, right? Yeah, we, we thought about that, well, why don't we go, so, no, let's ask the committee first, is the committee supporting this, supportive of installing and, and, you know, a scoreboard in that field? And if the answer to the committee to that is yes, then we will in fact go out to the neighbor and see, you know, here's what we're thinking, what are your concerns or do you have concerns?
I have a couple of questions. So first, for the, in thinking of the neighbor, the neighbor has expressed challenges with this field because of the noise that has been generated by the players who are banging on the benches when, you know, encouraging batters and whatever. So would this scoreboard be exclusive use for just the Hingham High School varsity softball team? Or are we now opening this up to anyone who rents the field is going to use the scoreboard? So then this field becomes more enticing to use? I'm just raising questions that they might ask.
Question understood, and I think that would be, you know, I mean, I think the intention was to have it to be full use, but I don't know, I don't know why the committee can't restrict, restrict it if you think that the varsity, you know, softball should have it, but that's, that's really sort of a committee issue. Initially, it was like for full use, right?
Okay, I mean, I'm just.
That's it? No, that was it?
I'm raising it?
We hadn't, hadn't addressed, oh, this is only for, we hadn't addressed any rules associated with it or anything, Liza, it's just, hey, we'll install a scoreboard and if people use that field, there's probably a remote control and they can use the scoreboard just as well as anybody else could. But it's really for the girls, it's, it is the girls' varsity softball field.
It's the primary.
Okay, that, okay. So that's just, that's a question I'd ask. So for me personally, the cost is more than I had anticipated. I am glad to hear that there is a specific fund for the fields. However, this project was not included in last year's athletic department presentation of a key capital item requested, and so I do raise the question of, on that presentation, planning for the replacement carpet of the turf field was a high priority as well as the weight room and there were a couple of other things. So, and another thing is when the parents came here bringing this up again, there was some discussion about getting parents or boosters to help supplement the cost of this, just as the baseball boosters had helped to supplement other things on the baseball field. Now, the baseball scoreboard was paid for when we did the other scoreboards, just as we did the softball scoreboard when we did those. So have we heard anything from parents of supplementing the cost of this? Even though there's $148,000, we have that carpet looming and we don't have a plan for that yet, so I, I worry taking $20,000 out of this when we have that, that carpet looming.
So, so Liza, what I?
Just a question, the baseball field, the scoreboards, who paid for that one? When, when the scoreboard was done for the baseball field?
When the fields were done, that was all part of the field budget.
The field budget.
Just as the softball scoreboard that's up was also paid for by that project.
Okay.
So this one was not anticipated.
Yes.
But the baseball field has other enhancements to it with batting cages and foul pole lines and things that the boosters helped pay for. And so, and at the meeting when this was proposed, there was discussion about could softball boosters help support this scoreboard effort? So, or other organizations to assist with it? So I'm just asking that question if we've.
So Liza, I didn't hear directly from the boosters, but I heard indirectly that if we do approach them, that they would be willing to help out. Now, I have not approached, approached anyone for funds other than looking at the funds that we have available, but that's something that we can actually incorporate as part of our, you know, do that, do diligence and going out there and asking the boosters for money, and I don't think that it's going to be a problem.
So, so I think the ask then tonight is just simply, can we move forward with going?
Can we move forward?
Not, we're not approving the $20,000, the $17,000 spend tonight, we're just approving, moving forward.
Moving forward, given the, our director, the authorization to move forward and apply and see where that takes us. That process is approved, then is a question of spending the money, right?
Correct.
I mean, obviously, it would be great if we could have both, the appropriation of the money and, you know, authorizing the director to not only pursue the application but also act as appropriate. The field, no, people not comfortable in voting tonight on the other portion of it, at least giving him the green lights to go ahead before the planning board, that would be a huge step that would be taken tonight. So then perhaps we can consider, once he has that done, then we can come back and ask for the money, if you'd like to do that. That would give me time to actually reach out to the boosters.
Okay, all right. Is that fair?
And then, then talking with the neighbor?
Sure, we can do that as well.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to authorize the business director to move forward with the application process.
One second.
And.
Sorry, was that the end of your motion?
I think so, because they will not act as appropriate, right?
Okay, yep.
This is the acting.
This is the action.
All right, so Carlos made the motion, Libby second. All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks everyone. All right, all right. Item 8.6 is a, to consider a homeschool application that is included in your packets. Does anyone have any questions on that or should we go, took a look at it before the meeting? Can't remember if it's a motion or not or if that's just a.
Yeah, we do have to.
We do a motion, all right. Does someone want to make a motion? To accept the homeschool application?
I'll make a motion to accept the homeschool application of Jangir Khan, Grade 1, for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second? Yes, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Great, and then 8.7, 8.8, 8.9, and 8.10 are a number of, they're in your packets, are a number of appointments and at various schools, advancements on the salary scale, and resignation of a parent educator at foster school. It's not going to read all the names in the interest of times. Number nine, any other items as not reasonably known 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Anyone from administration? No? All right, great. Subcommittee and project reports. I'll start with Libby. Do you have anything? You may not.
So I had sent a copy of the draft to Pam to print for everybody, but I don't know if we got, I don't know if that happened, so. Should have gotten a copy of the draft, social media agreement update.
It's in the pack. It's in the back.
Is it in there?
It is. I didn't see that.
I didn't see that either, okay.
Oh, I came in at 3:30 this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so there it is. Now I'm ready. There it is. I'm just seeing it now for the first time. Okay, so you guys all got a chance to read through that, and basically, it really is just to follow through with what Kay had started, the memo that she wrote in January, and we discussed, but I, my, I think I needed to sort of wrap it up and put a bow on it and make it very simple. So I pulled from her memo the points and numbered them, and so I've got seven things here, most of which correspond directly to something in her memo that we've already talked about. There are a couple of minor differences. Number three, the spokesperson may delegate the job of posting messages to social media and any other appropriate form of communication. That one's kind of implied in the memo, but it isn't stated explicitly. And then number six, school committee members may encourage other groups on Facebook to share school committee posts is, I got it, just say it. New and speaks to the question of whether, that we were having about, like, how many different Facebook posts could we post on and sort of falling on just Hingham Public Schools. But we could still get the word out more broadly by encouraging other people to share. So we looked at this in the Subcommittee and approved it and wanted to bring it to the full committee for comments, questions, changes, whatever, and then, and it's just an agreement, it's not policy specifically or a law by any means.
So. I have a question about number seven. Any discussions, comments that arise in social media are handled by the spokesperson? Anywhere in social media? And about anything?
I guess that is pretty broad, isn't it?
Yeah, I have a concern about that too, because, I mean, I've, I've been tagged in a post, and then if I'm tagged, I need to respond to that person, because, and so I would just delete seven because we've already designated the spokesperson up above.
Yeah, I think the intent of that was that arise regard on a post that we made, so I think that's what it was saying. I think, right, that was the intention, that if it's just a post that we made, then only the spokesperson should reply, not everybody should.
Yeah.
That's what I think the intention was.
So we could, we could be more specific.
Yeah, on the Hingham Public Schools page.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right?
Or responding to, that respond on, or, yeah.
So you could put it under number three, like the spokesperson may delegate the job of posting or replying to messages? And get rid of number seven? Does that make sense, Libby?
Uh, sure. I still want to make it to the Hingham Public Schools page.
Yep, okay.
Not our private.
To our, yep, to.
Not our private one.
To our, yeah, to the Hingham Public Schools.
Yeah, not social media.
Yeah, yeah.
Really broad. Um, and then I have a question, too, about, um, if one of us is texting, um, not texting, but whatever. Would we want to say, I've got my school committee hat on now, or I've got my parent hat on now, um, so if I want to jump in on something that's going on on social media, and share personal experience or something, I could do it as a parent?
Yes.
So, you have to disclose that, and that's what I usually do. If I say anything, I can, I write letters to the editor, and I'll disclose that I'm speaking as my own, not as a member of the school committee. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm representing my ideas, not the school committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
So, you can do that, but you just have to disclose.
Um, okay, so we've got two points that have just come up that we need to sort of work into this.
Yep.
How do you want to do that?
Bring it back to committee.
There you go.
Let's bring it back to committee.
Okay.
Rather than, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hash it out now.
And hash it out now.
Okay.
All right. Bring it back to committee, because we have a meeting coming up-ish, September, September? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Um, who else do we have? Liza, do you have anything for, um-
Not public session.
Yeah, all right. Carrie, anything else from policy?
I do.
All right.
So, we met on August seventh. Um, we talked a little further about, we talked before about maybe engaging MASK, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, to help update the policy manual, and I spoke with the field director. It's expensive, so it's ten thousand five hundred dollars. So, we talked about different options, and Dr. Austin had identified a central office staff who can help us with at least getting started with aligning our policies with the National School Board MASK format, and that way it'll make it a lot easier for us to see where we might have holes in our policies. And then, we, we also have access to the online managed policy manual, the template, so we can start the work there, and then if we need to pull in either our own legal counsel or MASK, we can go back and revisit that, so, um, that's what we figured we would do.
Okay.
Uh, we spoke a little more about the public involvement policy. Jamie had reached out to a law firm and had asked some questions about it, and they sent us like a sample draft. Liza had pointed out that we, if we, if we just adopted that, we're going to lose some things that were good in our current policy.
Mm-hmm.
And then Paul also brought, um, a, a draft policy from another district that we looked at, so we're just going to take, take a look and try to incorporate some of, like, all of that.
Okay.
We'll bring it, so, we'll keep you posted.
Okay.
We talked about the plastic water bottle and straw policy. As Kim said, tonight, um, we are going to be moving the directions away from, uh, plastic straws, which is a great move, great news. Um, the, the bottle, water bottles are a little tougher, um, just because we don't want to replace one kind of plastic with another, if people keep forgetting it, so, um, so the food service is going to keep looking at that, and we'll see, and then Dr. Austin, I, I won't put words in your mouth, but you're going to work with the all-time PTOs, and kind of see how we can encourage the, reducing that use of those bottles. Uh, we talked about a potential social media policy, um, and we agree, it's, it's really necessary. I mean, I was looking through, most of our benchmark towns have them, um, and they protect students, staff, and the districts.
Mm-hmm.
So, we looked at the MASK social media policy template, um, and, uh, Dr. Austin's going to bring it to the leadership team and just kind of get some, some feedback from stakeholders, and then we'll, we'll keep working on that. Uh, and then we also talked about the order of business and agenda from the school committee.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll be looking at that, too, and it's, it's really just giving the chair and the superintendent a little more flexibility with the agenda, and so.
Okay.
And we're going to consider, um, look at that with the public comment, because they're both about school committee operations, so.
Okay. Paul and I had talked about potentially putting together, um, a consent agenda type of thing, where there are sort of everyday business items that are regularly just, I, you can just approve these items on the agenda and then just quickly move on, so, we might bring that to the committee as a way to keep being efficient. Um, all right, thank you. That's a lot on policy, but that's good stuff, so thank you. Um, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned earlier, long-range planning met on August seventh. Uh, we addressed several items besides the scoreboard, um, you know, a lot of capital improvements. Just for your information, heads up that, you know, John is looking at the vestibule at the PIS. We have set aside about fifty thousand dollars, and that may, that may actually end up costing approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, because there's some other, other ideas there. So, you know, if John wants to elaborate on that, you're welcome to, John, just to give everyone a heads up of what may take place there.
Yeah, I think that, on the, on the vestibule, I think when we got our original estimates that, um, you know, we, we had the engineer take a look and stuff, and I think we were short on our estimate, and, and that was to take the vestibule and build it down below the steps, but I think, and, and when we went back to like, say, okay, let's get that design going, I think the engineer sort of thought that it's probably not the best idea to build the vestibule there. The best one would be to go out front, and that would require a frost or a wall to be built, you know, j, uh, perpendicular to the building and, and create the vestibule outside. So, um, and, and she provided, she said she thought she did one for about eighty thousand dollars, but there's about thirty thousand dollars worth of design work as well with that job. So, so that may run a little bit higher than what we anticipated, so we decided at the committee meeting was, well, we, we have the money, so let's get the design going, so we can figure out what the price really is, and then we could, you know, make a judgment and see, you know, can we, can we do this, or should we go back to the well next year and say, hey, we made a mistake, this is really what the cost of this project is, it's designed, this will be how much it will be, you know, if we have to pick up another twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty thousand dollars, I think it's a, a good investment, so, um, that's, that's really how we'll proceed with that. Um, you know, you like that, you like to have your, your numbers straight, but you, you get lost in communication somewhere where, um, oh, yeah, if we put a wall here, and you could do that, and, you know, you, you think about it, but then the steps have to be changed, so, um, and then, then after you look at making all those changes, it's really not the best way to do it, you know? The best way to do it would be go out front, so.
That's great.
That's it.
Thank you.
And, and a few other things, is, you know, the master plan, it's on progress. Hopefully, John and his team will have that done in the next few months, um, and, um, we are looking to, um, what else for SOI for next year, besides addressing Foster, that we perhaps may consider, you know, putting in a, an SOI for the windows at Plymouth River, and so on and so forth. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Liza, actually, I meant to ask you, has the town-wide plan, planning committee, the master planning committee met? Yep?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Um, uh, I talked, Gordon Carr will be, who's on the planning board, will be the chair of it.
Okay.
And they were waiting for, last time I talked to him, they were waiting for the selectmen to appoint people from the talent bank, because there's, I think, three community members-
Yep.
For it.
Yep.
And they were also waiting to sign the contract with the consultant who's going to advise.
Okay.
So, um, I'm waiting to hear.
Okay, all right.
When I know something, I'll report it.
All right, great, thank you. Um, all right, any liaison reports running off? Nope, not the school. Okay, great.